I'm the Chair of the Hollis Brookline School Board. To my left, I have Kate Stoll, a member of the school board, and Beth Williams, another member of the school board, Tim Grisonne, who is our principal of our high school, and Patrick West, the principal of our middle school. Coming around this circle, we have Cindy Van Conant, a member of the school board, Liz Brown, a member of the school board, Krista Whelan, a member of the school board, Gina Burks, our Assistant Superintendent in charge of curriculum instruction. To my right is our Superintendent Andy Corey, and to my left, just joining us, is Vice Chair Tom Solon. I'd like to appoint a process observer. Is there any volunteers for this? Beth? Okay, Beth will be our process observer. We have no agenda adjustments, I don't believe. And so at this-
I just want to ask, is there a plan for non-public?
Do we have a non-public?
I would like to have one.
There's one on the agenda, so-
I know, so I would like us to implement it.
Okay, so you're, okay, we'll have a non-public then? Great. So, I'd like, at this point, nominations, resignations, and correspondence. It's you, Mr. Corey.
I am writing to notify you of my upcoming retirement, completion of school year. My last day of employment will be June 30th, 2022. I consider myself blessed to have served as an administrator and such progressive in support of the community.
We change gears.
I consider myself blessed to have served as an administrator and such progressive in support of the community. I am indeed fortunate to have been a colleague to an extraordinary staff and humbled their parents in the custody with their children's education. The past 26 years at Hollis Brookline High School have been the highlight of my work career, and I am grateful to the many opportunities supported by the district. I sincerely thank all of you for your encouragement, support, and trust you have shown me during my tenure at the high schools. We have so much to be proud of, and I truly believe that our beloved schools continue to be in debt of luck for high schools to well stay. Although bittersweet, it is time I move forward with the next phase of my life. As the saying goes, you never really leave the place you love, you take part of it with you and leave part of you there. I will forever treasure my 26 years I've spent as a cavalier, and wish you continued success with deep regret that come from Bob Bulett. I'd like to thank him and put that before the school board.
When is that effective?
I think-
When is that effective?
June 30th, 22, the end of the school year.
Sir, with all due respect, between the masks, the full heart and body in here are weakened, or what you're saying out here in the audience?
Sorry.
I think-
I asked, I asked when the resignation, or retirement, would be effective.
I need a motion to accept Bob Bulett's retirement effective June 30th, 2022. Thank you. Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth. I just want to make a comment that we appreciate Bob's years of service, and his humor, and what he has brought to the school district for the past 26 years, and we wish him the best in his retirement. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? That is a 7-0. Okay, anything else, Mr. Corey?
That's it for that.
Great, thank you. No more, nothing else? Okay. Okay, at this point, I need to have us make a motion to approve some minutes. So I need an approval of the minutes from July 21st, 2021. Beth, Kate, and Cindy, that would be Williams, Stoll, and Van Conant, were absent, so they have to abstain. I have an amendment to replace, on page 28, line 8, replace EBD with EBBD. So I need a motion to accept as amended.
So moved.
Moved by Tom Solon. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Krista. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of the four who are here? Four, that's a four, zero, and absentions, three. Thank you. Okay. At this point, I'd like to move to, towards public input. I'm going to read the policy, Hollis Co-op Policy BEDH, Public Participation at Board Meetings. The primary purpose of school board meetings is to conduct the business of the board as it relates to school policies, programs, and operations. The board encourages residents to attend board meetings so that they may become acquainted with the operation and programs of the schools. All official meetings of the board shall be open to the press and public. However, the board reserves the right to meet and to adjourn or recess a meeting at any time. The board also reserves the right to enter a non-public session at any time accordance with the provisions of RSA 91-a colon 3. In order to assure that persons who wish to appear before the board may be heard, and at the same time, it may conduct its meeting properly and efficiently, the board adopts this policy the following procedures and rules pertaining to public participation at board meetings. Number one, the first 15 minutes will be set aside for citizens to address the board. This period may be extended by a majority vote of the board. Speakers must provide their name and address, and will be allotted three minutes per person. Number two, consistent with the RSA 91-a colon 3, Policy BEDB, and the laws pertaining to student and family privacy rights, the board will not place any matter on the public agenda that is to be properly discussed in a non-public session. Complaints regarding individual employees, personnel, or students will be directed to the superintendent in accordance with Policies KE and KEB. Three, all speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene, libelous, defamatory, or violent statements will be considered out of order and will not be tolerated. The board chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if the speaker does not follow this rule of order. Persons appearing before the board are reminded that members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Questions shall be directed to the board chair, and that was amended in October of 2011. Also in Policy BEDB, the board reserves the right to limit public discussion at board meetings to agenda items only. Unquote, the board has practiced this for many years, asking that the public limit their comments to agenda items only. I think tonight, I would like to be able to make a motion to extend the time set aside for public input, seeing that there's many of you here. But before we do so, in order for us to have a sense of how much time we should extend it to, I would ask that if you're planning on speaking, that you please rise. So what do you think? Like, 45 minutes?
It becomes 17, so that's 51 minutes in the minimum.
Okay.
And other people that show up, some more than that.
An hour? Okay. Okay, so, I think an hour. I can't hear you.
One minor, yes, I know that.
Okay. It's reached out to me. I will make a comment to that. Okay, you can sit down, thank you. I think, I believe we have a minor who would like to speak. If there's an objection from the board, I would like to allow a student to speak tonight. Is everybody okay with that? Okay. So I need a motion to extend public input to 60 minutes. Moved by Beth. I need a second. Kate? Any discussion on that?
Just in case other people come late, or maybe we can extend it.
We, we could further extend it. I mean, last time, just to comment, we extended to 60 minutes, and we did go beyond. We tried, but I just want everyone in the viewing audience to be aware that it's, we're going to try to keep this to an hour. That's our attempt, so-
Are you allowing each speaker?
The board policy is three minutes a speaker. So, are there any other questions? All those in favor? Okay. So that's a 7-0. Just before we get started, we have been reading the many emails that we've received. We're listening to everything, we're processing it as best we can. As you may already know, public input is not a time for questions and answers. The board doesn't respond to people when they speak, but we will be commenting on our reopening plan during the, I think, the deliberations portion of the meeting, or maybe discussion. We do set, we do limit comments to three minutes, and we do set a timer, so we are really strict on the three-minute rule. Input is restricted to Hollis and Brookline residents, and since we've made that exception, we are having one exception of a minor who's speaking. Once recognized, please state your name and address for the record, and any questions shall be directed to the board chair. And at this point, I'd like to open the floor for public comment at 6:00, at 6:10 PM. Please rise. Come to the microphone, please.
Hi, Lori Miller, 14 Forest View Drive in Hollis.
You need to be a little louder, Lori, it's really hard to hear in this room.
Lori Miller, Hollis. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for being here and doing your job. Being a school board member under good circumstances is a job, and you guys are just extraordinary for all your efforts. Secondly, I'd like to point out the fact that this audience is probably not a fair representation of the parents and community because of the fact that there are so many people who are avoiding coming to this meeting because they're uncomfortable in the situation where we're in a closed room with no masks. And I did send you an email this morning, I hope all of you got it and read it. I am hoping that you will go along with the Hollis and Brookline districts and start the year off with universal masking, and then come up with a set of criteria to back off of it as things get better. With that, I will excuse myself, and I'm sorry to be rude, but I'll shoot home and watch you guys on TV. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your input.
Last year, our admin proposed a plan that allowed families to choose in-person or remote learning, and specified masks would be optional for in-person. Then you allowed yourselves to be held hostage and coerced by the unions into memorandums of agreement mandating masks. This tied our hands. Even as all our neighbor districts lifted theirs, our mandates remained in place until the end of the school year. It's no surprise that an email was sent the very next day lifting our mandate. Now our staff population is fully vaccinated, at least to the point that they desire to be. They have no excuse, and you have no excuse either. There's a long list of failures with regard to COVID policies, many of them on your watch, and here are a few salient examples. The 2020 graduation was outdoors with a strict limit of three persons per family pod. Principal Barnes was adamant that no pod could exceed three persons. He adamantly refused any exceptions whatsoever, and families simply had to choose who could attend. He had no explanation when pressed about the pods of four that were assembled for families graduating twins. There were mandatory masks for the duration between a student athlete's car and the practice field, but as soon as they walked on the practice field, they could remove their mask. Mandatory masks during practices and competition for tennis and track and field. Mandatory rass during recess, yeah, that's the younger districts, but it was driven by the unions, and you are complicit. Student athletes were allowed to participate in wrestling, but this was deemed okay because they weren't allowed to shake hands. These examples equate to illogical practices such as closing public restrooms and placing a portable toilet in front of a lock facility. None of those examples are backed by science or based on even a shred of logic. The opening plan for this year has a minimum of a three-peat between students and classrooms, but not in the notoriously cramped cafeteria. How could anyone consider that? You may as well say that it's okay for guests to come to your house and urinate in your swimming pool, as long as they do so only in the deep end. We expect our schools to teach our children to be critical thinkers, and yet we're displaying an inability to do so ourselves. I'd like to commend the Bedford School District for making masks optional yesterday. And the Merrimack District previously. It's also come to my attention that this board is actively seeking ways, or at least some people on this board, actively seeking ways to further limit or even eliminate public Please don't go there.
My name's Jim Gill. I live at 30 Milton Place in Hollis, and I was raised to say what you mean, mean what you say, just don't say it meanly. And as far as the school board goes, a definition of corruption is to engage in improper conduct. For example, a prosecutor who withholds exculpatory evidence is defined as corrupt, they can lose their license. A surgeon using inferior equipment because he's being paid off based on greed, that's a form of corruption. Another form of corruption can be caused by hubris or pride. You folks were elected to office to reflect the will of your constituents. When you're representing your own will because of what you think or believe, whether you know it or not, you're corrupting the democratic process. Because now you're not representing the will of your constituents, you're representing your own fears or partial information. And in terms of the courtroom drama on this public health narrative, much of the exculpatory evidence that would do away with masks, all kinds of things, by all kinds of experts, many of them pioneering the mRNA technology, like Dr. Malone, for example, they're being censored. About Hollis got a petition, simple petition, to let you folks know what the will of the people was in Hollis. Within a day and a half, it was shut down, it was censored. So enterprising people jumped on another platform, trying to keep it going, to show you people, right, what the will of your own constituents is. It was shut down less than a couple of hours. So look around us, we're being censored in every format, every platform, if it doesn't agree with this narrative being passed on from on high with no accountability, but you folks are accountable to the constituents of Hollis and Brookline. And to do otherwise is to tell the very people that elected you, the plastic surgeon who spoke a week ago, the lawyers, the business owners, I mean, these are very savvy, very educated people. You're basically telling them, no, we're not only not going to give you a choice, we're going to tell you what to do-
Time is on the-
-and we're going to mandate it. Your kids, it's not a question of money, kicking in another few bucks or whatever for a building, or a gym, or whatever. It's that we're talking about your own children, their well-being doesn't get any as personal. And ultimately-
You've got, your three minutes are up, sir.
-to mandate and overrule the will of your constituents is an incredible act of hubris and a corruption of the democratic process. And I think you people care too much-
Your three minutes are up.
...to do that.
Your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
I'm Erin Nabel, I live on 13 Milton Place in Hollis. So I was, last year I had my sophomore year, and it was basically ruined for me. I basically suffered from, a lot of, like, suffered from depression, and I have never suffered that much with my mental health before, until that year. And I didn't know at first, but it turned out that it's just because the year was not normal. It was stressful, and I would just, I would sleep a lot, and I didn't know why. I would just sleep to escape. I'd stress eat and everything. Every time I think about going back to school now, going into my junior year, I would get a pit in my stomach. Well, normally, I would feel very excited to have a fresh start to, like, the next One thing I am wondering every time I hear about masks being mandated in the schools is how come my family can go out and, go out to a restaurant and eat without a mask, even entering the restaurant without a mask, and I can't get an education without having a mask mandated for five, five days a week, seven-plus hours, seven-plus hours a day? So can I ask people who, in this room, who support having masks optional, please stand up?
Okay, actually, thank you.
John Garuba, 30 Meadow Drive. I'm genuinely taken aback by that young gentleman's bravery.
I can't hear you, you have to space me, please.
Masks. Masks are damaging to children's social, emotional development. That's a fact. How do I know this? I witnessed it firsthand last year. Last year's policy hurt my children and my family. I have a child with sensory processing disorder. Masks are particularly difficult for her. The added stress of masks, in addition to already difficult school situation, brought her to the point where she flat-out refused to go to school due to the resultant anxiety that has been shown, that is, school-wide, other children are experiencing it as well. Remote learning is a complete failure for her. Additionally, this summer, I can clearly see the social impairment caused by COVID concerns experienced by my other daughter. Masks hurt my children more than the risk of contracting COVID. I've thoroughly evaluated the situation, and it is clear for me and my family, the risk of COVID pales in comparison to the unknown lifelong impacts of continuing masking our children and their mental health. I would never suggest to know what's best for anyone else. Each individual has its own risks and benefits to weigh when being part of society. Is it the board's job to judge what's best for me and my family? Is the board to decide it's okay to harm my children for the protection of others? Of course not. Fortunately, you don't have to make that choice. The clear choice is freedom. Optional masks is the most respectful of all the community members. There are vaccines available for children 12 and up to alleviate the concern of contracting COVID for both students, teachers, and family. The COVID risk for vaccinated individuals is less than contracting the flu. Would this board vote to harm the social development of children to protect them from the flu? I know the answer to that, that's clear. Hollis has never required masks for children to protect them from the flu. Requiring masks will continue to hurt my children, my family, and countless other community members. Side with freedom and respect for all. Please don't harm my children further. The choice is yours, it's your responsibility, and no one else. Make masks optional.
Harold Cadman, 169 Depot Road, Hollis. I stand in opposition to the mandatory use of masks in Hollis schools for the following reasons. First and foremost, anyone under the age of 25 has a 99.992 survival rate, which means COVID-19 is less deadly to our kids than the common flu, and a near 0% chance of them becoming sick or dying from COVID-19. So the masks provide zero protection to school-age kids. Secondly, the survival rate of those under 70, teachers, for example, is 99.82%, which is nearly identical to the common flu. If we don't mask up for the common flu, then the masking of our kids to protect teachers is simply child abuse. Third, the mortality statistics are erroneous, are erroneously high because, according to Dr. Burks of the CDC, quote, "We are in this, we in this country are taking a very liberal approach to counting COVID-19 deaths." And she goes on to say, "If someone dies with COVID-19, we are counting that as a COVID-19 death." So obviously, the survival rate in the US is lower than it should be, which fortifies my two earlier points. Fourth, it is coming out slowly but surely that there are effective therapies and treatments for COVID-19 that have been suppressed by the CDC and the WHO in order to authorize the rollout of an experimental warp-speed vaccine for widespread or potentially mandatory use. We all know that hydroxychloroquine has been outlawed by the, by the CDC for the treatment of COVID-19 in some states, and more and more doctors are reporting how effective it is in treating the virus. Another treatment, ivermectin, has received even higher reviews, but is also being suppressed. Others such as budesonide and nebulized 0.2% diluted hydrogen peroxide is also very effective, even in the latest, even in the later stages of the disease. The law states vaccines cannot be promoted if there are effective therapies to address the disease. This is why these therapies were not sanctioned as safe, even though they have been safely used for 50 years as a prophylactic to healthy travelers heading to virally contagious countries. In summary, given the above facts, there is no good reason to require a mandatory mask in our school. That decision is to be made by the parents and not by bureaucrats armed with erroneous information. Thank you very much.
I'm Jim Crittenden, 232 Worcester Road, with a hat tipped to Sesame Street. My comments are sponsored by the letter T and the number zero and peanuts. The T is for totalitarianism, because that's what we're suffering under. We're being pushed, forced, having all these things jammed down our throats, do what you're told to do, and stop asking all these questions. I think you're already hearing some of that from the few people that were before me here today. We even have Arnold Schwarzenegger a week ago saying, "Screw your freedom." He should know better, his father was a Nazi. So I think, the next time you see someone driving down the street with all his windows up, alone in the car, and his mask on, you might ask, "Why is he doing that? Is he protecting himself? Does he think he's protecting someone else? Is he just virtue signaling?" Or maybe, maybe he's an immigrant from a totalitarian culture like China or Russia, he's afraid of being arrested and sent off to a relocation or reeducation camp. If you think it sounds a little hyperbolic, you may not have noticed in the news this morning that Australia has just started building such camps for people that refuse to take the vaccine. So, the number zero, what's the number zero? Last year, the CDC reported 335 deaths, COVID deaths, for children between the ages of 12 and 18. But it took the Johns Hopkins group to look into it this last summer and say, "Were those with," as the fellow before me was saying, "with COVID, or are deaths due to COVID?" And what they found is the number of those students that, that had perfectly normal, healthy immune systems was zero. All of them had compromised immune systems. So what do we do about that? How do you deal with, with children coming to this school that have compromised immune systems? Well, if you have a peanut allergy problem, you can ban peanuts from the whole school. It's not a big deal, it's easy, and nobody will probably even mind. But if you've got a problem like this, where you've got a compromised immune system in a student, or two, or three, maybe cancer, these are special needs kids. You can't throw masks on everybody else in the school, you've heard many, many times before this and already tonight, about how bad this masking is, how dangerous it is for medical health, social, social and emotional health of these kids. You really can't do that. What you really should do is treat those few students that are compromised, have a compromised immune system, treat them like special needs kids. We have an excellent reputation. I know people that moved to this town to bring their special needs kids into this school system. Maybe we haven't focused on compromised immune system kids in our special needs program, but we certainly could. So we identify and, and take care of those kids in whatever special way, and let all the other kids come to school without masks and do their thing.
Your time is up, thank you, sir.
Maria Hubert, 68 Hideaway. Can I address the board with some handouts? I don't have enough, I only have nine, but would you-
You can leave them, and we'll pick them up.
Here.
Mm-hmm, that's fine, thank you.
I just wanted to speak to the data. Could you hear me okay?
Not really, you need to be a little louder.
Anyway, so I'm a data analytics professional, I've been doing that for 30 years, and I specialize in forensic data analysis. I, this summer was predicted last year that this would, that they would do this with the Delta scariant. A variant of COVID would never be more dangerous. It would be more communicable, but not, never more dangerous. If you're hearing otherwise, it's a lie, the greatest scientific minds in the world concur on that. Anyway, but I decided the other day that I wanted to, once again, download, download the CDC data. It's on cdc data.gov, they have all data sets for all different kinds of metrics. I loaded it into SQL Server and did some aggregate analysis on it, because I believe in objectivity, and I haven't watched the news in over a year. And I have trusted the scientists and the doctors that I've connected with on LinkedIn that are frantically trying to get the word out in, in the face of all kinds of censorship that these protocols are dangerous and unnecessary in causing the virus to continue to mutate. So I, what I gave you, and there's also some in the back, if anyone would like copies of these three charts, please, they're on the chair over there. I will just briefly tell you what I found, what I discovered on Monday night when I ran- the numbers. I don't know if you can see this, but this is a chart of the entire period from January 2020 to current, okay? If you see here, it's August, and we can't really count all of August because it's not over yet. So let's look at July, which is complete, okay? The numbers are way down from last year at the same time, okay, in the state of New Hampshire. Monthly deaths in July of 2021 are 15, and this was elderly people at the end of life, okay? The same period last year, July 2020, the number was 44. So we're talking about 44 last year, this time, and to 15. So I'm really not understanding why everyone is so afraid of, you know, what's going on right now. There's nothing going on. This data proves it. This is right off the CDC site. If you would like the data set, I could send you the raw spreadsheets. I could even direct you to the website so you could download the data set yourself. All you have to do is hit export to CSV, okay? I loaded into SQL Server so I can do aggregate analysis and look at comparative, like previous years and all that. But that is New Hampshire deaths, which show no reason for mitigation.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Okay.
No, we don't do it that way. She gets three minutes per person.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyway, please review the data. Thank you.
Mary LaBarren, mother of four, Parker Road, Brookline, New Hampshire. This is my second school board meeting and my first time speaking. Please be gracious, I'm super nervous and want to puke. Academically, last year was appalling. My husband and I decided on remote learning for our eighth grader due to the fact that it is unhealthy for children to wear masks six-plus hours a day, which is your policy, especially considering that the CDC itself indicates that the masks made available to the general public do not suffice to prevent the virus from entering respiratory passages. My eighth grader nearly failed three classes. He is an A and B student. I've never seen him hate learning more than he did last year. His teachers asked if in the spring he could come back to the building, but you were still enforcing masks so he could not. They said that kids who had returned to in-school learning were doing better than remote students, but we had no way of participating because of your mask policy. Isn't that discrimination? Concerned HB parents have been sharing relevant and updated information regarding the virus throughout the year, yet you refuse to make any changes. Even after the teachers and staff have had the opportunity to be vaccinated, the mask policy did not change. I understand that at the beginning of 2021 school year, we did not have enough information to make better informed decisions, but the adjustments that should have been made with the information presented did not occur. But now we know better. We know children do not spread or get COVID as adults do. We know not a single child in New Hampshire has died of COVID. We have the JAMA study, which I sent to all of you, providing evidence that masks are not effective and are harmful. We know there are several notably larger school systems in New Hampshire that have found a way to conduct in-person learning without masks. I feel we can find a way to do that, too. Sorry, I lost my place. It is my experience that the SAU made decisions that benefited and legally protected themselves but left my children vulnerable. The mask policies discriminate against students that cannot wear masks and left them with a subpar academic year, a year that they may never recover. Another year of masking is unacceptable. Let them return to school this year mask-free. Let us, the parents, decide what is best for our children. Unmask our kids. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jaima Wilder, and I live at 48 Pierce Lane in Hollis. I'm coming to you today because of concerns that I have, and you're hearing a lot of information right now. And what I'd like you to do is take a moment to pause, to rewind time a year and a half, and think about, before you even heard about COVID, what our lives looked like. I want you to think about what the kids did for activities, and how they interacted, and how they learned, and how you taught them how to be empathetic, and show kindness, and love, and care for people. With everything that's going on in our world, we should take a pause to remember what life should look like. There will be viruses that come and viruses that go. We have gotten rid of the flu because of COVID. But we sit here in a room full of people, and the first speaker, I believe, said that we're not represented, or you're not seeing who in town feels the way they do, but we're the people that are coming and telling you how we feel. It is not good for the well-being of children psychologically to be masked. They learn how to care from people and how to learn how to interact by seeing facial expressions. The masks do not protect people, especially the children in school, if they're wearing them in school and they're playing sports and walking down to Monument Square to hang out. You can put a Band-Aid on a problem that you're scared of, but what you're doing is you're causing a division, and you're not representing the voice of the people that elected you. We are here because we want the right to choose what is best for our children. And I have five children, and I do not want them to wear masks. I don't want them to breathe in their own carbon dioxide. I don't want them to learn that it's okay to listen to what a government says to you that's not being, we're not being given true information. I understand that when last year happened, and when it first hit, that you shut down, and we went to Zoom meetings, and I could see the effect that it had on my children. You might be worried about people getting sick, but you're not taking in consideration the psychological damage that you will do to hundreds of children that are in place in your care and well-being in our school system. There's no evidence that the masks will stop them from contracting the illness or from spreading it. And it may make some people feel safer, but you don't have the right, as school board members, to tell us what is best for our children's health. And I am pleading with you today to give us the option, which is our constitutional right.
Your three minutes are up.
For life, liberty, and happiness.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask that you settle down on the applause, simply because we really do want to keep this to an hour, and I can stop this after an hour, and then not everyone will get a chance to speak. So I get the sense that you're all in approval, and I have heard you. I appreciate it. Okay.
Yeah, my name is Aaron Pincasek. I live at 133 Dow Road here in Hollis. I don't have any kids in the school district, but I care about the kids of our country and about the kids in Hollis, right? And I've heard all this discussion about follow the science. Most of you aren't old enough to remember some of the posters that were up in the past. "I have no flies thanks to DDT," right? Remember that? And there was another poster that was talking about the purity of white asbestos fake snow. That was science, okay? So, yeah, follow the science. The science here has been so convoluted that nobody knows what the right answer is. I could look around this table right here and see that some of you have masks on and some of you don't, and that's because none of you understand what the science is because the CDC doesn't understand what the science is. The fact that we've already heard here today several times about the impact of mask-wearing on children psychologically and with their emotional development with their peers in the classroom is true, and that's significant. You can look at the suicide rates in teen, I mean, not the younger kids, but the suicide rate in the teen population has skyrocketed, and it's in large part due to the psychological negative effects of forcing isolation and forcing masks. And you, as a school board, choices have consequences, right? And that's what life is about, is choices. And you weigh the risks and the benefits when you make those choices. And you, as a school board, are making choices that will impact the lives of students and children for the rest of their life. And you should not mandate that they wear masks, because you're going to do damage to them, and it's going to be irreparable.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Dodge, and I live at 73 Alson Drive in Hollis. I know that we are living in an unprecedented medical and political experiment, and I use the word "experiment" intentionally. I worked for the federal government for 20 years, and if anybody wants to think that the CDC is an honest broker of science, then they need to review what is on their website this very moment and their plans for the future of this country. What makes me upset is that the only justifications that have been cited for making masks mandated, it's the same source. There isn't one source that has been identified, whether it's union, the federal government, the state government, State Board of Health, that isn't saying the exact same thing. And the reality is that we have lived with COVID-19 since 2005, and that the last two years are unprecedented because it was decided at whatever level that this COVID-19 could be manipulated and used to implement theories, practices, and remove our freedoms by skillfully keeping the population afraid. There is no scientific evidence that masks keep you safe or protected. And I can tell you, from sitting in a classroom six hours a day, the whole point of masking was to deter children from touching their faces, from spreading perhaps whatever they were carrying at that moment. And the masks are the exact opposite. They have become instruments. They touch their faces probably 30 times more than they ever would, adjusting the mask. They take the mask off, they leave the mask around their neck, which is the worst place to leave your mask because of the bacteria around your neck. They drop it on the floor, they drop it on the ground, they eat with the mask on and off, on and off. So all the saliva, the grease, the food particles are collected. Some of the questions that need to be asked, and I'm not smart enough to be the ones that crafted these questions, but I'm going to read some of them. Do used and loaded masks become sources of enhanced transmission for the wearer and others? Do masks become collectors and retainers of pathogens that the mask wearer would otherwise avoid when breathing without a mask? Are large droplets, last year, we remember?
Your time is up, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Leah Scott. I live on Proctor Hill Road in Hollis, and I'm going to be a senior this year at high school. Mr. Cohen, my dad said that you often listen to students sometimes more than parents. So I'm here to ask you and the school board to please end the mask mandates in our schools. Masks are really uncomfortable. They make it hard to learn and hard to interact with your friends. For us seniors, COVID and this mask, I'm stoning a big part of our high school experience. The last part of sophomore year and all of the junior were ruined. Please let us have our senior without this mask. On a personal level, I have feelings, and this mask prevents me from seeing people's lips move, which is important to me, for me to understand what they're saying. It is hard to talk with friends, it is hard to understand in class. The solution for me last year was that I was put in the quiet library, watching classes online, but I was alone most of the time. Please end the mask mandates so I can be back in class and enjoy with my friends. Finally, I may be the only person in this community to be able to say what I'm about to say, so please listen to me. I grew up here. I grew up for the first 14 years of my life in a communist China before being adopted into my family here in Hollis. In China, there's no freedom. There's no folding to align school board members. There is no freedom for speech or meetings like this to debate, but trying to convince people to do things a different way. In China, there are only mandates. Those mandates come from a federal type of communist party, and whatever they say, you must do. It doesn't matter if the decision has bad consequences. It doesn't matter if the mandate doesn't make sense. You have no choice. You must do it, or there will be a price to pay. I love America because of the freedom I have. So many Americans don't appreciate it because it is all you have ever known. Freedom is valuable, and my dad said that freedom is like muscle that must be exercised to be healthy. I love America because I can fold and someday start a business on my fair own. I love America because I can stand at this microphone and speak to you even as a student, and you value my input. Who knows? I may be the one who convinced you to change your thoughts and end this mandate. That would never happen in China. But I see in America that things are looking more like China. I see how the federal top of government is issuing mandates and expect everyone to follow. I'm asking you to act like Americans, exercise your muscle of freedom, evaluate the evidence, and show your independence as an elected school board of this community. End mandates, and please give us kids freedom from these masks. Thank you.
I want that in the record. Proctor Hill Road, and if you knew her story. I love you, Leah. I think most of what I wanted to say has already been said. I do want to reiterate that, especially for this, the co-op, you know, 7th through 12th grade, all but a handful of our kids are 12 and up. They have access to the vaccine. I'm sure there's a few 11-year-olds, but you could carve out an exception for them. But I do think that since they have the opportunity to be vaccinated, all the teachers as well, I think that puts this decision a little bit different category than some of the other decisions being made by other school boards. And so I do encourage you to end the mask mandate. And the data is pretty clear on how young people respond to COVID. We are incredibly thankful that it is the way that it is, or it has played out the way it has played out. In 2013, I had a child who got the flu, which turned into pneumonia, and she almost died. She was on a heart-lung bypass machine for a week and was in the hospital for a month. I point this out because I don't want to come across as callous when talking about deaths. Every child who dies, it is a tragedy, and the family and community that experiences that, it's deep and difficult. But between 200 and 1,000 kids die each year from flu, depending on the severity of the strand. And since the beginning of the pandemic, I believe, a little over 350 children have died from COVID. Whether they died from COVID or because they had a comorbidity is, again, we don't know exactly. But the previous flu season, I think it was 477 children, 18 and younger, died of the flu. And so we didn't mask, you know, I didn't expect that the schools would all mask when my child went back to school after having her incident. We don't mask because of the flu. I think at this point, with the knowledge that we know that we shouldn't force our kids to mask, and there's a lot of other reasons that I emailed you all earlier on today that I would ask you to read. The other thing is, is I know sometimes it's hard to exercise that muscle of freedom that Leah just talked about, but I encourage you to do that. I know it's hard when, you know, bodies from President Biden and the CDC are saying, you know, "Put the mask on." But I'm thankful to hear that Bedford has decided to make their schools optional as far as masks. And so should you make that decision, I encourage you to do it. You're not going to be going alone. I know there's other communities in the state and around the country that have made that decision as well.
That's three minutes, Mr. Scott. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ariella Torgerson.
I live at 61 Hannah Drive here in Hollis. Thank you all for all of your hard work that you guys put in the past for always. But just about everything I wanted to say on my notes has almost been said, so I'm going to try to keep it brief here. I am not anti-mask for the people who want to I am not anti-mask for the people who want to wear their masks. I'm anti-making it mandatory. And I think people need to realize that they can be in favor of something but still be opposed to making it mandatory. I am against wearing masks for the simple reason that I feel like the masks are not effective. As we all know, cloth and surgical masks do not filter out microscopic particles such as viruses, and that's a known fact. The masks that our kids wear are not having a tight seal around their faces. That makes it ineffective. But the most important thing, I think, is that once you touch your mask, it becomes contaminated, making it harmful. We have the soccer coaches telling my son, you got to drink a gallon of water a day. So, and I'm telling my kids, you have to constantly hydrate, especially when it's hot out. They are touching their masks all day long, on and off, and on and off, and on and off, and like touching everything around them. I'm pro-wash your hands all the time myself, but they're touching every surface and instantly touching their masks, which are damp and a breeding ground for other harmful germs and bacteria and viruses. So not only do I think it's ineffective, I'm thinking it's harmful to be doing that and putting that up against your face. And that's just, I think, basic logic and common sense there. I wanted to reiterate the zero deaths in the state of New Hampshire in the 0 to 19 age category with flu exceeding that. One thing I don't think anyone's mentioned, though, is the natural immunity that I think many, many of the kids already have, possibly way more than we even think of. When you, when you think about all the people who could have been asymptomatic, when you think of the people who possibly had COVID before we knew it was COVID, to say people who have positive antibodies, there's going to be still masking up for a whole, indefinitely, mandatory masking up. And then lastly, I just want to address one of the things I have heard many times from people who are pro-mask is that we stayed safe because of the masks or we stayed in session because we wore masks. So I just want to be very, very, very honest here and open for everyone here is that we know that as soon as the kids walked out of the building, every single mask came off. People were in cars together. People socialized in large groups inside and outside. Even when we shut the school downs, we all know that Nickel Fields was so packed that my husband couldn't even find a parking space at Nichols in order to pick up my kid. You can't say that kids have to wear masks from like 7:30 in the morning till 2:30 in the afternoon and stay safe, and then immediately from 2:30 in the afternoon till 10 o'clock at night. No one's wearing masks.
Your three minutes are up.
And that's the reason. Exactly. And that's it.
Thank you, Ariella.
Hey, Cliff Medling, 34 Alston Drive. First of all, how about those student testimonials? I can't compete with that, right? But I'll try. So first of all, I wanted to applaud this board for your decision last year to allow parents to choose what's best for their children, remote or in person. We saw in Nashville next door, they had remote only. And I have many friends there, and it was a disaster for most students. Here we are again. This year, we have the opportunity, you have the opportunity, to be courageous and allow parents to decide what's best for their children again. This year, we have a lot more data, too, than we had last year. Last year, we didn't know. Everybody thought masks were a good idea. This year, we have vaccines, we have more therapeutics, and we have seen the effects of masking on children emotionally and psychologically. So I sent you all an email earlier today. Sorry it took me a while to finish it. A lot of references about the negative effects as well as the ineffectiveness of masks, which we've heard a lot from others today, that I don't have time to share, but I hope you will look at that in review. After reading, you will clearly see that the benefits of wearing a mask to protect you from COVID are very low, and the negative effects of wearing a mask emotionally and physically are much greater for children. One quick story I had to share. Last winter, I took my daughter, she's a big volleyball player, and she made a travel volleyball team. Took her to her first practice, and when, and she was the only girl from Hollis. And I went and picked her up, and I said, hey, how did it go? You know, how, did you make any new friends and stuff? She looked at me like I had two heads, right? She said, like kids do, right? And she said, Dad, we're wearing masks. It's impossible to make new friends. It's hard to talk to anyone. You can't read their faces to know if they're smiling. And that's what I learned from my daughter, how these masks are really affecting our children in such an important development stage. I've also spoke to several teachers. I have several teacher friends. My mom was a teacher for 36 years. And students this past year are not engaged in class, and they're not participating like they have in previous years. And they say it's a lot of it's due to the mask and the distraction and the fear of COVID. We know as many people mention that Amherst and now Bedford have given their parents the decision. And also, the UK is separating itself from US. They were taking more CDC guidelines from the US, but they are not requiring face coverings in schools. A quote from the public health of England's medical advisor, Dr. Susan Hopkins, says, "It's important that schoolchildren don't wear face coverings because COVID infection rates are low among their age group, and wearing face coverings could affect their long-term development." I ask you today to be courageous, once again like you were last year, and leave the decision up to the parents as to where their children should be wearing masks. Thank you.
Diane Power, Westview Road, Brookline. Good evening. I believe that we are all here tonight with a similar goal, and that is keeping our children safe. I would like to thank the school board for their efforts on behalf of all our children, as well as for everyone who has taken the time to contribute to this important discussion. I'm going to keep this really simple. First, we must clearly define the problem in order to arrive at a rational, effective solution. I believe that the problem we are here to address is protecting our students and staff from a virus, namely the coronavirus. So for the purposes of this discussion, we must understand what are the characteristics of this virus. Coronavirus has a particulate size of 0.1 to 0.2 microns. We know this based on the scientific evidence from the CDC and other respected scientific institutions. Second, we must then carefully consider the proposed solution to the problem, masks. There are a number of mask options. This board has not specified what type of mask they are considering mandating. However, the best of the best is the N95 mask. What is an N95 mask capable of filtering? N95 masks are rated to filter particulates of 0.3 microns or larger. The coronavirus is 0.1 to 0.2 microns in size. Therefore, the best of the best, an N95 mask, is unable to filter the coronavirus effectively. Moreover, an NIH 1995 study found that in order for an N95 mask to achieve filtration efficiency of 95%, the particulate size must be 0.75 microns or greater, and a tight seal must be made by the mask. So therefore, in order for these N95 masks to be effective, they must be professionally fit-tested. They do this in hospitals for their staff. Notably, N95 masks cannot be fit-tested for use by children. They're not designed to be used by children. Additionally, according to OSHA, N95 masks are not to be worn for more than one hour at a time by anyone. Which brings me to my final point. Masks of any type are never intended to be worn by anyone for more than eight hours at a time. To wear a mask in such a manner creates unintended consequences, such as skin degradation, decreased oxygen levels resulting in hypoxia, harboring bacteria, and weakened immune systems, to name a few. So herein lies a much bigger problem than the virus. While your intentions may be well-meaning to protect our children and our staff from a virus, it is clear that your solution to mandate wearing a mask does not solve the problem. Please do not mandate masks.
Hi, I'm Maren Bateman, 12 Liden Drive, Brookline. So quarantine was hard for many of us. And basically, it was the isolation that really got to me. And I kept throughout it all, you know, I kept holding on to the hope that when school would start, things would get better, you know? Maybe we'd have to wear masks, but I'd, at least I'd still, you know, maybe get to like interact with my friends and, you know, get that reassurance and, you know, a hug that I need because I'm a very physically affectionate person. But when, but I quickly realized how wrong I was when the school year first started. I, so-
It's okay, take your time. It's okay.
Very emotional. The past school year was honestly the worst school year I have ever had. I had very limited interaction with my friends. I was told by many teachers I wasn't allowed to hug them or anything, really. And it, I wasn't able to do many of the things that I looked forward to. And like it, it really took a toll on me, not being able to go to the people that I needed most when I needed it. I have never felt so alone, so isolated, so hopeless. And, and honestly, like during the school year, I couldn't eat. I couldn't sleep most days. It was hard to even just zoom in on the days when we were forced to zoom in. And, and it's just, it's been really hard. And I guess my question to you is, how much longer are we going to do this? When is enough going to be enough?
Hi, I'm Anna Birch on Broad Street.
A little louder, Anna.
I was watching, little louder?
Yes, please.
I was watching from home, and I decided to come up because I do feel that I have a, I have a different opinion. Here I am, wearing a mask. But I just want to say a few things. Didn't totally prepare at all. But I feel like, I want to thank you all, as many have, because last year, I was also the envy of my friends for having my child go in person for the year. So I feel like flexibility was really key last year. And I feel like that's really important this year, too. Flexibility from the students, from the staff. It's not perfect. My son's going into ninth grade. I really wanted to tell him, sweetie, you don't have to wear your mask this year. Isn't this great? And I think we all thought that was going to be happening. I thought that in June and July. I thought things are looking good. I don't think you're going to have to wear your mask this year. He's vaccinated. I just felt like maybe it was going to be different. But in the last couple of weeks, things have changed, and it doesn't feel like it did then. And I just feel like we're all going on a bit of a roller coaster here. But I trust this board and I trust this administration to have the best interests of our students and our staff and larger family members. I mean, I live in a multifamily house, and my grandmother, I mean, my mother takes care of my nephew who has really advanced asthma. So we're all starting to make different decisions now of wearing masks, and we're not allowed to go in her apartment anymore. You know, I mean, things are changing. So I feel like what was true a month ago may not be true now. So it's not perfect. But I guess what my hope is and my wish is is that we would put some faith in this, the school board and, and our families, that we can be more flexible, because this is not an easy decision at all. And there's a lot of input here. But I, I would support wearing masks, and maybe it will change. Maybe in a month, maybe there's something that could be put in place in the conversation tonight, that there's benchmarks for when we do change it. It's not perfect, but I thank you and I wish you luck. I don't envy you. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
Joe Garuba, 28 Winchester Drive. I want to, I want to talk, before I bring in my comments here. There was mention made of stopping the clapping, and we only have an hour. I just want to talk about that a little bit. So the clapping, obviously, it's telling you where the crowd stands, but it's not just for you, right? There are people here who have never spoke at a podium before. So that clapping is for them, too. And I would ask that you just have the patience to put up with a couple of minutes of extra clapping before you try and stop that. And the other thing is, we're not even at an hour here. So if we talk about the process, this very, the process here is very civil, and it's the epitome of a participatory democracy. So I am very much against any kind of actions this board might be considering in restricting public speech in the future. So getting on to my comments here. I have two topics I want to talk about. There is, on the agenda, the Articles of Agreement. And I mentioned that at the last meeting. I didn't have an answer, so I understand this isn't a back and forth. But I'm going to pose some questions, and I would really like during the deliberation session that you guys explain what's going on. And the other thing I have is a petition, details of a petition about this mask mandate, and I'd like to share those details. So talking about the, I'm concerned the board is choosing a path to hold a special meeting to amend the Articles of Agreement. I spoke about that concern at last month's meeting, and I haven't seen an explanation of why a special meeting is needed to address non-substantial changes to the articles. A special meeting held at an unusual time is likely to not be well-attended. We have enough serious problems to address without adding a special meeting at a time when the district is working to recover the educational losses our children suffered over the last year. So I would ask specifically, let's hear why we need a special meeting, why this can't be done in March. It doesn't seem to justify that. And I'll follow up with the mask petition later. Thank you.
Aron Dunsmore, 11 Flag Road.
I'm sorry, I missed your name.
Aron Dunsmore, 11 Flag Road, Hollis. Hi, we're new to town. We just moved here. We're really excited. I commend the board for the excellent reputation that Hollis has as a town and a school. And one of the big motivators for moving here was because of the great school district that we have. I'm the father of seven, and I've heard a lot of really great arguments, both for masks and against masks, tonight. And I think that diversity of opinion is a really, a real strength of the town and of the country. And I think, you know, the solution that some people have proposed of allowing parents to choose really reflects that diversity of opinion and kind of lets us live those values that we have. As a father of seven, I've seen a lot of diversity in terms of my children and their experience with masks. So maybe not to add to any of the other scientific things that we've said or other great arguments, I'll just give you a little bit of a personal anecdote across the spectrum of my children. I have a daughter that wears masks like fashion accessories, and she loves it. She thinks they're great. I have two children who, in these very formative teenage years, people talk about the bacteria and the, and the germs of masks. And they, this past year, had horrible, horrible acne outbreaks and really, really, really impacted their self-esteem and the way that they felt about themselves. So much so that one of them stayed home for an extra couple of weeks to try to get control of their flare-up because of the mask-wearing. I have another child that is very outgoing and very witty, but told me that he didn't talk in school because no one could understand him. Another daughter that has speech challenges. And, boy, she will talk and talk and talk, but no one would understand her. Luckily, she was undaunted and would continue to talk and talk and talk. So, you know, I have a lot of hope for her and her resilience. So I'll just leave you with that. I think, I think the idea that parents can decide for their children best is really where I stand, and I, and I hope that at the end of all this, you stand there, too. Thank you.
So we've hit an hour. I would ask that the last speaker be the last person in line, which is, I believe it's Mr. Garuba? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Connie Lawrence, and I live in Brookline. And I would like to point out to the board, because I've spent a lot of time perusing the FDA website, that masks are on an EUA authorization. I can find no studies in regard to children wearing masks anywhere. So, and also in regard to human rights violations, if you go on any human rights website, mask-wearing is the first step of depersonalization and torture. And so I am much more concerned about teen suicide rates than I am about the COVID rates when they can't even produce a COVID death in children who didn't have underlying conditions. And now they've had the ability for teachers and students to get the job if they want it. So if you do a mandatory mask mandate, I think because of the EUA authorization, you can expect lawsuits.
Thank you. Thank you.
May those who have not spoken speak?
I'd like to end, I really.
I just wanted to say one quick thing, if I may, just one quick thing.
Yes, sorry, you're right. I'm sorry, Maria, if you could take a. Okay, okay. It's fine, it's fine. I, I would like, Maria, I would like to.
Fifteen seconds, I just want to address one thing. For the parents that want their children to wear masks at, in school because it feels that their, they feel their child is protected, that's fine. If they feel their child is protected, they should wear a mask, okay? If they believe the mask is working, what difference does it make what another child is doing? And we don't want our children to be mandated to wear masks. We want choice. We want the children to make the choice, the parents to make the choice, never mandates.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Larry Andrew, and I live on Pullman Drive in Hollis. And I came here tonight with no intention of speaking at all. I don't have kids in the school system, no close relatives. My, my grandkids go to another school.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, sir.
Yeah, I say, I don't have kids in the school system here, so it's kind of irrelevant to me whether kids wear masks or not, because they're not my kids. And I can appreciate all you people feel a sense of responsibility to keep people safe. But I was reading something here about this Gen Z's. I guess they're the youngest generation. They're like my, my grandkids' generation. And there's a real issue, it seems. I'm reading something from somebody that's really familiar with technology. He, he designs, you know, he spends his life dealing with technology, but he knows the downside of it as well. And apparently, there's a real issue with these younger people with the iPhones and all that, and it, it's something to do with, it interferes with their ability to interact with other people. So he says here that they're increasingly homebound, jobless, when they get older, dislocated, lonely, lethargic, physically weak and depressed, taking prescription pain kills, and 35% are more likely to commit suicides than previous, less technical generations. So there's a real issue already with younger people not having relationships with other people because of the technology. I would like you to consider that when you do your deliberations, because the whole masking thing, as we've heard from a lot of other people, seems to be adding another layer of difficulty for them, where they're experiencing all these other problems and not relating to people. And that has to, it seems to me that has to show up in their ability to get a good education. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I am Tom Whalen from Worcester Road. Just want to say, I am decidedly anti-mask, as many people in this room are. I think it's a horrible, suboptimal option for children, for adults, for any of us. I think we may disagree on why that's the case, but certainly, none of us would like to wear masks if we don't have to. The anecdotal stories today we're touching, I feel for the kids who are going to school. It's probably not their best year of school this year, it certainly wasn't last year. And the only thing worse to me than masks would be Zoom meetings for classrooms. So I had to think about why you have to make this choice tonight. And I thought back about a choice that I made back in February of this year, and that was when I got my second dose of the vaccine. Now Hollis and Brookline are affluent, highly educated community, and yet, we have 50% full vaccination rate in the community. I think the choice has been ripped out of your hands. I think the community failed us in not doing their duty in a democracy, to give up small freedoms, to enjoy the great freedoms that we have. And so to the people who are behind you that don't have vaccinations and are complaining about masks, I'll say, look in the mirror. You've made a choice. I respect you can make a choice. But choices always have consequences. And the consequence is that they've ripped the decision from your hands about what to do this year. We're about to get overrun by the Delta variant. That's not historical, that's present day. You recorded a lot of historical data tonight, and that's not accurate to evaluate the effect of Delta variant on children. It has a much different effect. Now, you have to make a decision, the community will support it, but I do feel that you don't have a choice because of the community. And I thank you for your efforts and for all your consideration.
Rich Manley, True Road. Balancing budget seems pretty easy now. What, I wasn't intending even to come to the meeting, but I was driving through town and I saw a sign about tonight's meeting, and I recognized that many of my fellow towns people would be here, and I wanted to come and learn what was on people's mind. And I've learned a lot about what's on people's mind. And people have brought forth what I think are legitimate concerns, and you've heard them all, so I'm certainly not going to repeat them. But I think in the analysis of what you do as you make policy, and for what you all must consider and what we as the townspeople must understand, is you're not in a mask or no mask situation. You're in the, you're in the business of mitigating risks for the children that are required to enter into the school. And I'm not here to say, put masks or don't put masks, but I'm saying that's really what the analysis is. And what are the tools that you have at your disposal where you can mitigate risks for the children of Hollis and Brookline as they enter by law into the school buildings here? And so as you look at all those things, I would imagine there are other aspects to your policy. I would suggest that for the folks that made some comments about some of the difficulties their children have, certainly, medical exceptions, religious exceptions would be included in any potential policy, one would imagine, to account for some of those difficulties. But as you hear the concerns of the parents, physical and psychological concerns of their children, your duty, it seems to me, is to weigh that against your duty to all of the children. We heard some statistics. Your job is to analyze data, and you look at data all the time, and you make decisions about that. And we have very few deaths in New Hampshire. I believe that's because school boards across the state, the state itself, has been working to mitigate this crisis for some time. And I was surprised to hear the stat about the vaccination rate. I didn't quite know, is that low? Hopefully, that will not be the case going forward. But as a state as a whole, we've done pretty well, because we have taken some proactive steps, I think, to stem the crisis that is before us all. It appears to be now impacting children because they don't have the vaccine available, the younger children. Now, I know you might not have many in that age group, but other districts in the SAU will have to think of that. And then I would probably conclude by saying, you heard some testimonies of students. It's been a difficult year for kids. They have had some great difficulties working through Zoom. But my, my child's graduated this year, and he spent 13 years in Hollis Brookline schools. The last one is a senior, with all the experiences here, but he had a pretty good year considering everything.
Three minutes is up.
And he's off to the college of his choice, and I went to the graduation, and I was so proud to see all of his classmates who were celebrating their very good years at Hollis Brookline. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Tiffany Testa, 101 Moore Hill Road. I'm gonna do as the student did, and ask anyone that is an active teacher right now to stand in the audience, if you are an active teacher. Anyone that's an active administrator. All right, because I kind of did a little bit of an experiment, and now we're in the classroom, and I am a teacher, and I have to teach the students of every passionate parent that came up here. But right now, what I'm thinking is, these are the parents that had the guts to come up here. And I heard one parent say, "Well, if we show up and we use our voice," but I know as a parent, as a teacher, not as a parent, I know as a teacher, I must also consider the silent voices. I must also consider every single student. And so I'm scared as hell because I don't know how to do it again. I'm not wearing a mask because I know the trauma that masks caused and the inability at this age level to do effective learning with masks. I know the social and emotional learning aspects of learning. I know the critical foundation of trauma. I am informed and I am toolled. I was told that we will go back with masks. I processed it. I'm crying because I don't know how to fail my kids again. And what I want to say to you is that I just listened, I'm so disappointed, I just listened and an entire community care about masks. We should care, you should care about how we're transitioning our kids back so that they can engage in deep, critical thinking in a time of absolute trauma, of uproar, of their families showing these, these passions. Who am I as a teacher and my beliefs, and how will my power affect the way I treat every single kid? I have certain thoughts on masks, I have certain thoughts on every single thing that I think about, but I have to go and serve every kid. So I'm asking the board to ask these questions of administration. How many days are you giving to professional development to prepare our teachers with the tools and skills they need to transition our kids into deep, critical thinking after these years? With, that's one question. I want to hear that question asked of our administration. Second, what will the focus of that professional development be? Because I would like to see the focus be on the foundational social and emotional learning that's needed for our kids to come and process, because we know, social and emotional learning and trauma-informed tells you, you need that before you can learn. So please give the tools to our teachers. Thank you.
Joe Garuba, 28 Winchester Drive. I heard that the petition information was passed on before I got here, so I just want to kind of wrap this up with the concept of critical thinking that Tiffany touched on. I'm asking you guys to do the critical thinking that we're here to teach our children. Look at the censorship, look at the media environment, and tell me, do you think this is a rational discussion that's going on there? Do the research, look at the death numbers on the CDC, they're there. The numbers are ridiculously low, lower than the flu, for the amount of deaths that this causes to children. So I'm asking you to do the critical thinking that we trust you to teach our children to do. And before I wrap this up, I want to thank, I want to thank you, obviously, for letting everyone here speak. So we do appreciate that, and I want to thank everybody who came here and made their voices heard, because it's not always easy. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to close public comment at 7:24 PM. Thank you. Moving forward. We're ready for our principal and athletics report. I'm gonna move, send that over to Tim and Patrick, who's going first?
I'll go first.
Thank you, Tim.
So if you haven't been up to the high school recently, there have been some recent renovations. We are paving a second lane around the side, back, and then left side of the building to allow for carpool lane closest to the building and allow free traffic to flow to the back lot, both morning and afternoon. Carpools should, should see some improvements as a result. We also have seen the need for renovations of our roof, which are being phased in. We had some improvements recently, and actually ongoing, currently being done as, as recently as, as today. Ready for a great school year, we have our, we open our doors for freshmen as well as any student new to HB, including sophomores or students who were remote last year. On Wednesday, September 1st, we have a slew of activities planned for, for those students on that day. And our first full day of school for grades nine through 12 will be on Thursday, the 2nd, with our standard dismissal time at 2:30. I have our enrollment numbers there. We saw an even swap of withdrawals and transfer students as of August 10th. We are right about 854 students, projecting it, 854 to start the year, with our largest class being our seniors. We are currently still looking for a few paraprofessional positions to fill. We are in the process of interviewing for those candidates currently. Ms. Squire, would you like me to do Brian's athletics report as well?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Sure. Sports are off to a start. We had, this past Monday, all of our sports get underway. Football and bass fishing kicked things off last week. And our first regular season competition will be when our golf team defends its state title on the 26th of, of August. And boy, soccer, first game under the lights on the turf field on Tuesday, the 31st, at 7:00 PM. Let's see, our middle school athletics, the plan is for return to tri-county competition, and that process will begin for middle school students on the first day of school for everyone, which is Thursday, the 2nd. And the first regular season competition will be Monday, the 13th. I did want to recognize that HBHS was recognized by the NHIAA recently as receiving the sportsmanship recognition award, and a testament to the, not just sportsmanship of our, our students, but our fans as well. And I'm open to any questions on either of the reports.
Anybody? First of all, it's great to see some new paving, that's fantastic.
Yes.
Much appreciated. And then also, really nice to see a return to some normalcy for our athletics. My understanding is that fans will be allowed at the turf field for the first soccer game, and, and not just parents, right, but, but fans.
That's correct.
So we're gonna see some normal experiences for our students in that way.
Yep.
And I'm grateful to the athletic department for continuing to do a great job, and to you for doing such a great job.
Thanks, Holly.
Yes, Kate has a question.
Tim, I'm curious, has there been any talk about return to normalcy with performing arts?
Yeah, so I have been in discussion, and the plan at the moment is to offer our typical performances throughout the year. And there were, we did go back and forth on, you know, potential venue changes, but at this point, it'll just be, the plan will be for normal performances, as have been done in normal years in the past.
Great, thank you.
Great, does anyone else have questions for Tim on Brian and Tim's report? Great. Mr. West.
So the new tiling in the hallway, as I don't know if you guys were able to see coming in, is complete. We're looking into finishing that hallway at some point soon, but might need to be pushed back, or pushed to, to next year. We have our seventh grade orientation on Wednesday, September 1st, which is the same day as the ninth grade orientation. It's a shortened schedule that day. Students will start in Rock, dismissal's around 12:20. Lunch will be served. Our opening days, our student open house days are August 26th and 27th from 8:00 to 12:00 PM. Students can tour the building. We have a scavenger hunt planned for that day for students to become familiar with the building. That's when students can practice lockers, walk their schedule, and just kind of become familiar with the building. That's also for, for students that were remote last year, and it's for seventh and eighth grade. The PTSA came in last week and met. They're gonna be at the open house days. They're looking for volunteers, so anybody out there that wants to get involved with the PTSA, you can reach out to Lexi Brooks and Katie Whitman. There is a Facebook page, HBMSPTSA Facebook page. Our maintenance update, Lance Finnemore and Ben R.
Our maintenance update, Lance Finmore and Ben Aria and the maintenance crew have been doing an outstanding, outstanding job this summer getting this school ready. As you guys can see when you come through, just the short walk. The athletics and clubs, we're still looking for quite a few coaches and advisors. Our enrollment numbers, we have 15 new students enrolled and three re-enrolled. Three eighth graders, 12 seventh graders. And as of August 12th, we have 379 students at the middle school. Our schedules are complete, thanks to Yolanda Flamino, Jen Campbell, Christine Turkot, Carrie Dodd, and Carol Tyler. Those are student schedules and teacher schedules. They all have their rosters ready to go. On July 31st, I had the pleasure of giving as best a tour as I could to the class of 1991. And there's a correspondence there from the class president, Matt Fertney. And there's some pictures in there as well.
Great. Thank you very much, Patrick. Sounds like things are going well for you.
Yes.
As you start your new position here.
Yep, yep, we're getting ready.
Are there any comments for Patrick? I didn't notice the new tiling, but I will try to make, make a note of it. Am I wearing my sunglasses? Okay, thank you very much. At this point, we'll move on to discussion. Do our principals need to stay?
They do not, if you'd like to dismiss them.
You gentlemen are welcome to head out to someplace air-conditioned. So... Um, sure, I think at this point, I'd like to take a five-minute recess, actually. I, I, it's been requested by a board member, and I would like to avail myself on that as well. So... The discussion, the first discussion point is the Articles of Agreement. I'm going to leave that to Mr., I think Mr. Solomon. Will you be the point person on that topic?
Sure, if you'd like me to be so.
That would be great. Ken, do you have something to, to say, or can I ask you a question?
You can cer-, you can certainly ask me a question, but I do have something to say.
Why don't you say it first, and then I'll ask my question afterwards?
There was a request for background information. Some of that information, I believe, was covered in the last meeting, and the meeting minutes would show the content of the proposed warrant article, the reasoning behind it. For those of you who've been following us, this was brought up before the last March meeting, which ended up being May?
April 10.
April. And it was requested that we not put it on that meeting for two reasons. One was time, and the other was the risk of confusion of having two warrant articles on the same warrant about the topic, and people misunderstanding the relationship. This article comes out of the approximately year-long study that was done by our staff attorney, along with, what's Diane's official role?
She's our clerk, district clerk, I think.
District clerk, to get the Articles of Agreement up to date with all of the amendments that have happened over several years. It was discovered that the Articles of Agreement that were posted on the website did not include all of the amendments that had taken place during various apportionment meetings and things like that. So, there was an ongoing effort. When that final document came to the board, it was the first time in quite a while that the complete document was reviewed, to the best of my knowledge. And we discovered that there were some items on it that were not accurate for how the co-op district is operating. And it's one thing to not follow the Articles of Agreement out of ignorance, not that it's any better, but once we knew that these things were called for, we had two choices, in my, in the board's opinion, or some of the board members' opinion. One would be to start doing them, or the other is to correct the Articles of Agreement. And the purpose for this, this special meeting, they can only be adjusted during the annual meeting or a special meeting. And the purpose for this is to make those corrections, what in the engineering world we call the print-to-part change. You know what you're building, now make the specification fit what you actually build. And the belief of the board was that we should not do it during the summer, when most people are absent, but that scheduling it, once school was back in session, with sufficient publication ahead of time, multiple meetings, an information session, a required hearing, and then the meeting, would be appropriate to do it without further putting it off for another year of incorrect adherence, as well as the risk of, again, bringing it up on a meeting where it could future, cause future confusion. That's the end of my speech.
I think you answered my question, which was why a special meeting. That's what I wrote down. Yes, Beth?
Oh, that's exactly what I wrote down. I think that, I mean, why that special meeting, why March, and I think you explained both of those. So, that was the question I heard, the only significant or specific question I heard.
I think the concern with bringing it up at our regular March meeting is that our last meeting was nine hours. And so, it's a complicated topic, and although it's mostly cleanup, it requires time to process and talk about and have questions and answers. And so, I think we felt, we, I feel like the March meeting is always a long meeting. And so, this would get attended to in that way. We'd have more time to explain things if we do it as a special meeting. And we have been very upfront with the fact that we've been working on this. For months, we've been mentioning it. So, I feel like those people who are paying attention should know that it's coming up. So, is there anybody else, comments?
I, I just want to add that the, the warrant article itself was drafted by our attorney. So, questions that have been raised about the correctness or the implication of it, we hope are not an issue because of the source of, of the amended document. And the other thing is that the, the goal of tonight, since, since the last meeting, we determined that the hearing will occur during our September board meeting, or during, but coincidental with our September board meeting, the goal tonight is to identify the date for the actual meeting. And we have our moderator present tonight to perhaps help us with that task.
Right.
I don't know if you want to do that.
I think it might be, I think it might be good to, well, I think it might be good to discuss it, and then during deliberations, we can make the motion to set the date. I think that will work, right? Good?
I'd like to recognize Drew Mason, if that's...
Sure, Drew. You may speak to this.
I believe Tom was, was asking the attorney about whether, what, whether there was a required time gap between the public hearing and the meeting. I, I never saw a response to that.
I did not get a response. Andy, have you heard anything back as far as whether it's the 10 to 25-day kind of range, or?
I'll need to check again. I wish I had known I was with him this morning, and I would have asked him, but...
I had sent him a direct email, and I didn't get a response to it. Drew, what do you think is a safe assumption if we want to pick a tentative date, assuming that, that we understand the requirements?
My guess is it's at least 10 days, and it may be up to 25, I'm not sure.
So, if, if we work in a 10 to 25-day window, you think it's likely that we are safe?
I think it's likely, but we know who knows the answer.
No, but if, but if we pick a date tonight tentatively and, and very quickly get that, that answer, then we still have time for potential postings and things.
Yes.
So, is there a date in mind? Because I know that this is not just, we pick a date. Like, you have people that need to be able to check people in, and you have to be available.
Yep. So, the, the starting point for the countdown is our meeting on September 15th.
Right.
And I believe that based on schedules that have previously been discussed, getting it, getting it done in the month of September is not in the cards. So, it would be, no, part of it's because of the availability of Jewish people. So, 10, 10 days from the 15th would have brought us to what, the, the 27th is the first?
That would be like the first full, yeah.
That's the first weekday, or 25th?
Do you count weekends?
Yeah, well, I guess we can.
Right, okay.
We can, because we, we have, we've had meetings on weekends, so...
Right, okay.
But unless things have changed, I got the impression that the last week of September was not available for...
Well, the third week is definitely out, but both, the third week is definitely out, both because of the 10 days and because of conflicts for the various...
Right.
The fourth week or the first week of October are both manageable, depending. Is it your thinking to have an outdoor meeting, or a Saturday meeting, or an evening meeting? Or have you gotten that far?
Could someone weigh in?
I, I would say there's, there's no restrictions regarding an indoor meeting or crowd sizes, is, is time, Drew?
No, then I'm, I'm not aware of any, any thing coming from the state. But does the, I don't know how many people we're like, likely to have, but a meeting in the big gym with under 100 people, that was, that's kind of what we did for the Hollis School District annual meeting. And it was okay.
Yeah, I would say we can do it indoors. I mean, I would say, I feel like we can do it indoors with the information that we have right now.
Okay. So, in that case, I would suggest the 28th, 29th, 30th, or fifth, sixth, and seventh of October.
So, you're looking at either the week of this, either the 28th, 29th, or 30th of September, or the fifth, sixth, or seventh of October?
That would be my suggestion.
Is there a date that works well for you? Okay. We're just checking our calendars.
The, the 6th of October would be a Hollis regular school board meeting.
Right, I figured it would.
Yep.
Six is what?
I said the 6th of October would be a regular Hollis School District meeting.
Probably run that in 30 minutes, though, and come on over for our meeting.
When is the SAU governing board meeting? The 14th, okay. Of September or of October? Okay.
My preference would be the first week of October, based on those two weeks.
Well, then, wouldn't the 28th, 29th, or 30th be better? Because you don't have another night meeting that week? Or that's what you...
Yeah, I mean, either, either that week or the, or to Tom's point, like the 4th, the 5th of October, which is the Monday, Tuesday. I, I don't mind necessarily going back to back.
I like a Tuesday better than a Monday.
I think it's better for, for folks, yeah. So, um, what, if...
That would be the 5th.
October 5th, if we throw out the October 5th date and we approve that, Drew, will that work for you, do you believe?
As far as I know, um...
Okay, well, let's, that's what we'll make the motion to be. And then, when we get to deliberations, and then if for some reason it needs to change, we'll have to figure that out. That's the way we work, right?
I'm available. The supervisors only need two of the three...
Okay.
...for each town, and the clerk is available.
Okay. So you think you have availability, but you're not sure?
I think that the 5th would work.
Okay. So I think that's what we'll make the motion to be. Thank you, Drew. Is there anything else?
Given that Jim drafted it, I would recommend that Jim be there.
Okay. We'll make a note of that. Like to have Jim there, anyway. It's a great point.
Just a point of clarification. We have the hearing on the 15th. The posted warrant can be different than what was brought up in the hearing if, based on input at the hearing, is that correct?
This is not a money article, so you can completely rework the, it's not a good idea, but you can legally, in my opinion, completely rework the article based on information at the hearing.
Specifically, what I'm thinking of is the update of the dates...
Yeah.
...has been a topic of mixed review. Some people think it makes sense, some people would rather do the math based on the original dates. It doesn't change the value of it, it's just a question of where the preference lies, and that's, that's the thing I view as being most likely to be a variable.
Okay.
So I think, I think you'd have to have the warrant posted 10 days, sorry, two weeks beforehand. I'd have to look it up, but it's something like that. So that would be...
That would give us enough time.
...21st or so.
Okay.
Drew, thank you very much.
Thank you, Drew. Thanks for being here.
Do you want me to stick around for the deliberations, or?
I don't think you need to. I think we'll be pretty... Can I take a look around? Do you think we'll be okay if we just, yeah? Can Drew leave? Okay. No one's gonna, gonna stand up and say, "Not the 5th, not the 4th."
We might change our minds, so...
Okay, I think we're okay.
I'll take the 5th.
We all would, Drew, we all would. Thank you.
I will say, in light of the discussion earlier, the masking rules for the meeting will be whatever are the school rules at the time.
Okay. Thank you, Drew. Okay, so at this point, we have our draft reopening of school plan discussion point.
What I'm going to do is run through the draft plan that's been in your packet. Much of it you will have seen as similar to last year. Again, our primary goal is to ensure the continuity of educational opportunities for our students as we continue to navigate the COVID-19 pandemic. All schools in SAU 41 will continue onsite instruction for all students on September 2nd, 2021, September 1st, 2021, for 7th and 9th grade orientations. Safely returning all students to in-person learning environment is the priority for the fall of 2021, as students benefit greatly from this mode of learning. We're again using our guiding resources of the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Center for Disease Control, the Environmental Protection Agency, the Learning Policy Institute, the National Association of School Nurses, the National Council on School Facilities, the New Hampshire Grades K to 12 Back to School Guidance, the New Hampshire School Nurses Association, and the Occupational Safety and Health Administration. Area 1 is health and safety. We are discontinuing the daily monitoring system in Power School. We believe that our parents did an outstanding job, but our parents are very much aware of the symptoms, and they have been working diligently with our school nurses. And again, you know, fever, cough, sore throat, we all know the symptoms, they'll all be gone over, and parents will be asked to keep their children home if they're experiencing those symptoms. If they come to school, they'd be referred to the nurse who will address that with the family. We will do targeted temperature checks by the school nurse or their designee for any student who accesses the health office. All students returning from an absence must receive clearance to return to school from either a medical provider or the school nurse. Students should not ride the bus on the morning of their return, and should report to the nurse's office immediately upon arrival. Tonight, we'll be discussing and have discussed masks in both Hollis and Brookline. I have recommended a mask mandate to open school. I'm also recommending that tonight to the co-op board, but I understand should the Board choose to go in a different direction, the administration will enforce any policies the Board sets forth. We are looking for permission to be able to change the plan as the data changes. One of the things that I think allowed us to be successful last year was instead of having to hold a board meeting every time there was a change in recommendations from the state, or different data, the Board had provided us, in their motion, the authority to make those changes. We think that is best for the students. It's often difficult with busy schedules to get a quorum of the Board together on short notice, and we don't want to go multiple days without that flexibility. Each school will return to pre-COVID dismissal times for the school start and end times, as well as the midday hallway travel between classes. Hand sanitizer will be available for students and staff use in all classrooms and common areas. Students, teachers, and staff who have symptoms of infectious disease, such as COVID-19, should stay home and work with their doctor for testing and care. Students, teachers, and staff who have been identified as a close contact for a COVID-positive individual will be notified but not required to quarantine. Again, Gina and I are sitting this close together. We both have masks on, or in this case, Gina has hers on and I don't. If I'm COVID-positive, Gina's parents would be notified, but they would not be required to quarantine. We are still reporting to DHHS, and they will still be working for contract tracing and potential quarantines. All fire and safety drills will resume based on the 2019, 2020 school year protocols as required by law. Under instructional, teachers will be provided with feedback from prior year teachers related to apparent skill gaps or weaknesses. They will work with their grade level teams to develop plans to spiral the content through the curriculum to reinforce the weakness. The Board may recall that Gina did extensive work before we left last spring, working with each grade level, so that we are anticipating where there could be some concerns or potential gaps in our curriculum. That information will be passed on again as we open up the school year. We'll use our regular PLC times to discuss those aspects. And again, our curriculum is designed to spiral through multiple grades. So we, in some cases, will be placing a greater emphasis, that may be in a past grade, to maybe address that gap, or in some cases, maybe we know from the preceding grade that it was very well covered, and we could just continue with our normal track. Quarterly collaboration time will be provided on Friday afternoons to ensure appropriate implementation of spiral curriculum content across the grade levels. We're not looking to have every Friday a half-day, but we will be coming back to the Board and providing ample notice for some dates that we would like to take some Friday afternoons where there'll be a half-day, because we want to ensure that we are meeting the concerns that we have identified in the curriculum. And to do that, we want to set aside appropriate times. So we're talking basically maybe one trimester, three, four times maximum over the course of the school year. Teachers will continue to use a variety of both formal and informal assessment tools to determine each student's present level of performance. All students will have assigned seats in their classrooms. Seats will allow for three feet of separation when feasible. Small group instruction may continue to utilize Plexiglas for an additional prevention strategy. Students will be able to share some instructional materials and instructional spaces. The Library Media Center and the Elementary Art Rooms are just two examples. School teams will continue to implement and utilize the MTSSB intervention process.
What is that?
It's the Multi Tiered System of Interventions. We've talked about it a lot as RTI.
It has new initials.
Right. And this also starts to take into account more of the social-emotional piece. RTI was strictly that academic piece, so during the discussions, they'll be looking at maybe different areas that we're concerned with kids. Google Classroom and other online tools will be utilized according to the district-established protocols. Under technology, all students will have classroom access to a digital, excuse me, to a district-assigned Chromebook laptop if they do not have their own. Students will be responsible for ensuring that the device is returned to the charging station prior to leaving the classroom. Human resources. Scheduled school volunteers will be allowed. They will be required to sign in and complete the short paper health screening. All school staff will receive continued professional development training in evidence-based public health practices. Teachers will have access to the district-developed online professional development training in the use of digital learning tools. The district will establish updated cleaning protocols based on guidance from public health agencies. Out-of-state professional development for teachers will be allowed on a case-by-case basis. One full-time dedicated substitute will be employed at the district level. The building administration will direct the work of this individual. Under facilities, health offices will return to their 2019, 2020 school year space, but will include one location for routine visits and a separate area for potentially symptomatic students. Students will have access to a locker or cubby for their personal items. Excess furniture will be returned to the classrooms. Please understand, as we did this returning, it's kind of like when you move at your house, you also encounter a lot of purging. People don't remember why something was bought, or something has been broken and never referred, so there's been some purging to some of the furniture that was not needed. The 2020, 2021 recommendations of the independent HVAC consultants will be, will continue to be implemented according to the recommended timeline and availability of resources. Just to give you a quick example on that, we turn our ventilation on last year, and we'll do it this year, three hours before the building is open, and it will remain on for three hours after the building is closed. We're also doing a little experimentation with our third-floor classrooms. As you know, they get very, very hot during the fall and the spring, so we're looking at some potential remediation that will help with airflow, which should help us with COVID. More information on that will follow. What we're doing is it's kind of like a standalone ventilation piece. One of the issues we have is when the windows were put in on the third floor, they're the pop-out windows, and most devices need double-hung. So Lance and his crew is trying to do some work to see if we do something in the fall, will that give us, you know, data to move forward with a longer-term solution for those rooms, which can become very oppressive. Electrostatic sprayers and misters will continue to be used daily by the custodial crew as part of the updated district-established cleaning protocols. Student services, students at all schools will be provided time for socialization during the school day. This will include recess time and morning meeting times at the elementary schools, Rock time at the middle school, and Cablock time at the high school. Each school will implement a developmentally appropriate action plan for addressing the social-emotional needs of their students. Yestay as an administrative team, 21 of us went and participated in a day-long training around social-emotional learning, how to use outdoor resources, kind of an eventual law program. It was a very thoughtful and helpful program for many of us to start to look at this through different lenses. Sometimes when you're always doing what you're always doing, you don't see what's right in front of you. So the staff that trained us did a wonderful job and gave us many strategies that our administrators will start to work with their, their staffs. IEP and 504 and parent request student progress meetings will continue to have the option to be held remotely. That was very well received by our families last year. Staff will receive training in the research-based program Mental Health First Aid. School counselors will provide additional support to students, especially those returning to in-person after a long-term remote learning experience. Food service, students will be able to travel through the food service line based on the 2019, 2020 standard protocols. Food service will utilize both the cashless and cash purchase model. Shared food items such as items donated by parents for classroom celebrations will be prohibited. Concessions at sporting events will resume where applicable. At the high school, again, to kind of provide the social distancing in that environment, we'll be using the outdoor spaces as we did last year. We'll be using the cafeteria, and we'll be using the bleachers in the main gym. So the students will have ample choices of where they'd like to go for lunch. They'll have plenty of space available if they choose that, and the administration will work to kind of, you know, get a sense of what groups want to be where, so that we can supervise them and kind of make those necessary adjustments as well. Extracurricular guidelines regarding student participation in athletics will be developed in accordance with the New Hampshire Interscholaristic Athletic Association. Masks will be optional for student athletes. I'd like to highlight volleyball. Volleyball, the players on the court will not be masked. The coach and the player sitting on the bench will be asked to be masked. So if you're engaged in the activity, as it talks about in all the plans, then you are unmasked. None of our athletes outside have any reason to be masked, so volleyball was really the only one we had to take into consideration. Student athletes will again be asked to bring their own water bottles. Touchless water bottle filling stations will be available for students to use. Daily attendance will be recorded and maintained by coaches for both practices and games. Attendance by the public at all public events will be allowed. Visiting teams will have access to the locker rooms. Meetings and rehearsals for clubs and activities will be offered in person or remotely. When in-person meetings take place, attendance will be maintained.
What does that mean?
That means that if I'm the monitor of the student council, I can have option for an in-person meeting or a remote meeting, and if I am in-person, I'm going to take attendance, so I know who is in there for contact tracing purposes. So any club of activity, I just used student council as the example, but if it was the school...
I just didn't know, attend to maintain, I didn't know whether that was being recorded or that you can't leave, or I didn't know what they were saying.
It's just knowing who was there, so we had the contact trace.
Thank you.
Facility use by outside organizations will be limited to community-based groups and will require approval by the superintendent's office. Overnight school-sponsored student group travel, including athletics and field trips, will be approved on a case-by-case basis by the superintendent. Transportation. Physical distancing is difficult to maintain on school bus. As a result, families will need to determine their own level of risk tolerance for exposure. Masks will be required for students riding the bus. No matter what decision that the Board makes of mask versus no mask in schools, transportation is governed by the federal government and is mandated on buses. Bus windows will remain open to promote circulation of fresh air. Obviously, as we get into the colder months, or it's raining, they make adjustments, but they still make accommodations to, again, circulate that air. Buses will be sanitized daily after the afternoon run, utilizing enhanced cleaning protocols. I want to mention that we are okay as of right now for drivers, but as you might have seen, it is again a problem across the state of New Hampshire for bus drivers, and this will, most likely will result in some changing of athletic times for events. A typical bus run finishes their elementary route around 4:00, so there'll be some occasions where we will not be able to get our athletes on a bus till 4:15, 4:30, so the playing will take place at a later time. In our home events, that's easy to rectify now with the lights on the turf field. There are a number of teams that are having discussions around maybe playing both games at the same site, if that team has the lights to accommodate a later time. But we will also, on our extensive travel, if we're going out to Kennet, or up to Keene, or over the Oyster River, we will again continue to utilize the coach buses that have the bathrooms, because in a two to two-and-a-half hour trip, that's often needed by our student athletes. because in a two-to-two-and-a-half-hour trip, that's often needed by our student athletes. I'd be happy to take any questions you have about the reopening plan, and either Gina or I will do our best to answer them.
Thank you, Andy. Questions from the board?
Beth, just one quick one, and I apologize if you said it and I missed it, but you did describe lunch at the high school, but what about lunch at the middle school?
This, we believe in, in this room here that we can meet the social distancing while also using outside. If the weather were to become cold or rainy or something, we would go back to using the gymnasium. We'd like to avoid that if possible, just for the physical education classes, but we'll do whatever we have to to provide the distancing.
No, that makes huge sense. And pre-pandemic, we had two lunch periods, just seventh, just eighth, but during this past year, we had three lunch periods. Are we going back to just two, so it'll be seventh and eighth grade lunch? Or will the schedule have three lunches? I'm sorry, I, I should've, I'm.
No, it's okay. So if you recall, the schedule was changed, board approved, COVID hit. The middle school's schedule actually didn't change, other than extending the passing period.
Okay, perfect. That's why I missed in last month's meeting, I just want to make sure of that, but thank you.
Will there be, if the ma, if the board chooses to go with masks in the beginning of the year, would you, what metrics do you guys foresee to use to make the change?
There are presently two or three metrics out there circulating that we've been looking at and having discussions at administrative meetings, meeting superintendent's meetings. There, one of the, the one released by the state is about the county, and as much as that is helpful, oftentimes the county doesn't reflect Hollis and Brookline. So we're trying to figure out a way to do a matrix that would rely more on local data for whether we, if we started mask optional, when we would move to mask, if we started with mask, when we would move to mask optional. So there's more work to be done on that, and it's, I'll be honest, it's somewhat difficult right now because DHHS, and that is not providing the level of guidance or input that they provided last year.
Are they still doing the positivity rate?
They are providing that on, on, on the site, but right now, remember that we don't have data for the weekends. And if you remember last year, again, I think it's kind of a natural family thing, a lot of times you take your child to get tested on a Friday afternoon or a Saturday morning, because that's when you as a parent might have the time. So we, we did a lot of notifications going back of Sunday emails for Monday morning classes. So I don't know if they intend to go back if cases increase, or they intend to not be updating data over the weekend. I think that'll probably get answered in an upcoming call.
Was that positivity rate based on county again, or was it?
That, the positivity rate was based on the state level.
Just the state?
Yeah.
Do you have a question, Liz?
Yeah, I, I have a question about, I think this is the first page, which is the, students returning from an absence have to receive clearance either from a medical professional or a school nurse? So what's going to be the, the process for that?
Well, typically, when the student is out, the nurse is notified of the students being absent. In many cases, the student has a pre-existing history, let's say seasonal allergies, and it's well documented with the nurse. So many of the symptoms that could be COVID could also be seasonal allergies. In that case, last year, our nurses were very effective at determining, working with that family and that parent, when to go see the doctor or when to return to school.
Okay. I, I think this is going to be one of those areas that as it's the, as it's written versus the practicality of it, may not necessarily be what you want, because we used to go to a school that required us to have a doctor's note to return the child to school, and what that does is that makes Mrs. Brown send runningo Joseph into the third-grade classroom, because I don't think he's actually sick, but it keeps me from keeping him home, because now I have to take a day off of work to take third-grade Joseph into the doctor in order to return him to school. So I wonder if this is going to have the opposite effect, depending upon how we implement it, that we want? Because what we really want is if the child gets up in the morning and they've got the sniffles and we aren't really sure what it is, it could be allergies and it could be COVID, what we really want is Mrs. Brown to keep Joe home, regardless of whether it turns out to be COVID, because we want people to be overly cautious. And then we want, if, you know, it looks like it really is allergies, we want Joe back the next day, because we want them to have the learning. So I just think we have to kind of think about a way to do the spirit of that without making it less likely that we do, the parents do what is going to be good, because unfortunately, as parents end up doing what's expedient once we're required to go back to work.
No, and, and the way you describe it, Liz, is the way we'd like to see it in practice. So we'll have to figure out maybe some wording here, but more importantly, how we craft our email to families in the alert that we'll send out as we start school to make that clear.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure, like, you know, like, i- is it going to requ, if I think that, you know, Joe has COVID, do I now have to get a negative test to bring him back, which was kind of the protocol we were in last year? Or if, you know, there's no other symptoms and we conclude that it was just hay fever, then it's that. I think we just kind of need a little more clarity, because I really do think that what we want to say is, use your best judgment.
And then have a con. And then have the conversation with a school nurse, which is a lot of times how we, not every student returned with a negative COVID test last year. We relied on our nurses to have that, to triage the situation with individual families, based on the medical history and based on all the documentation we had. And so this language was essentially the same as last year, less the mandatory negative COVID test.
Yeah. I don't know, I just, what you don't want is your nurse's office to have 30 little kids lined up, or, considering the co-op, 30 big kids lined up who say, you know, now I feel better, but I didn't go to the doctor, or, you know, I'm a senior and I just had Fridayitis, because they have that in the fall.
No, so we'll, we'll definitely look at how we word that when we send out the notice to families.
Great, great.
Beth, you have another question?
Yeah, just to piggyback real quick on what Liz said, you know, I think what you both summarized is exactly the heart of what you want. Just the one quick question I had is that it does, just to clarify, it says medical provider or the school nurse, so it's still allowing for the school nurse to evaluate a child and say, I, I think you really need to get seen. That's not taking that away. It's, it's allowing our nurses to use that, just to, just to clarify that. And there still is procedures in place that if a student is out for so many days, that it automatically prompts, you know, a return, like you need to get clearance to come back.
Thank you, Beth. Kate?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I.
Andy, thanks for that. Question about the potential of using outdoor classrooms again, especially if the mask mandate is in place. I personally would love to see the option of staff to be able to bring students outside where we know that exposure risk is much lower, kids can take masks off and, and have some of those comfortable spaces.
We definitely intend to use our outdoor space, our property. We found that putting a tent out for high school kids didn't necessarily mean that's where high school kids went.
Sure.
But I think when we look at the spaces we do have between the lacrosse field, the property to the left of the high school, that's an ice grassed area, softball fields, our turf fields, all that, our teachers developed a really nice routine of mask breaks when appropriate outside for class. One of the difficulties that we've talked a little bit with Rich Raymond is so many, so much of what we do nowadays is based on technology, and when you go outside, it was the wireless connections. So we're going to look and see if we can do some solutions to that for those teachers who would like to do that element, but for a teacher who wants to go out and do, I'll say, a reading lesson or a type of debate lesson or something like that, the outdoor property is readily available from here to the high school.
Great, that's good to know.
And I would just, can I just add one piece to that? For our co-op classes, which were all Zoom in the room, you, you couldn't Zoom from outside. So while you were in session with all students, you needed to be inside the room. So that was a barrier that will no longer exist.
Absolutely, no, that's great. A second quick question. In terms of sports and kids being mask optional, will the administration monitor that and change that if necessary?
I, I'm not sure I understand the question, because what's it going to start with no masks?
Right, but should there be an outbreak, or should there be an issue where all of a sudden students are getting sick? Can that be changed to mask mandate by the administration, or is that coming from somewhere else?
Well, if you approve the plan as written, you give us authority to make that change. Now, we would make that change based on state data, DHHS recommendations, or the NHIAA. I don't see, from everything I'm aware of, that outside is going to create that concern. I think the concern athletically may be, we're all on the same team, Andy gets COVID, what does that mean for the team? And that's, that's the process of working with that coach, working with our athletic department, and going through the protocols of making sure that all the parents are aware that their children may have been exposed, but being exposed doesn't guarantee that you will get symptoms that come down with COVID.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the, that the change was for athletes, not just kids in the classroom.
Correct.
Andy, I think you probably want to, because really, the, oh, this whole extracurricular or athletic section is a co-op issue. It's not been drilled over this with the elementary districts, because they didn't care, like this wasn't what, but I think this language needs to be revised to include the same language that you have above under the mask language, if you want the ability to pivot. I hate that word, and why did it come back into my vocabulary? But I think you, because otherwise, I think what you have is an edict that masks are going to be optional, and then we're going to follow the guidelines. So if the guidelines are, the NHIAA never gives you any guidelines, and that appears to be what they're going to do this year, then I think you've already said that the masks are going to be optional. If you want the ability to change that, if we have the, if the numbers show it, I think we need to revise this to give you the power.
So just move that bullet, like copy that bullet and put it underneath.
Or you could just say mask, will be, mask will be optional for students as of the beginning of the school year, and the superintendent has the ability to make a change to the mask requirement or an activity based upon local conditions.
Sounds like you should eliminate the first one, because we're not really catering to NHIAA. You may use that in reference, but it sounds like you're going to do it internally with whatever information you feel is most appropriate.
Which are you going to follow?
Well, I guess, I guess with respect to COVID, yes, because we always have to follow the NHI, we can't just ignore all their other regulations, have boys on girls teams and whatever.
No, I understand, but.
And isn't it, will be developed in accordance, doesn't mean will be followed blindly, right? So you develop your guidance in, well, in accordance, yeah, maybe we need to change that word to, I think.
You could say NHIAA. Guidance will be considered.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Making decisions. But, I mean, from, from a standpoint of whether it's masks, or whether it's what you're doing with the team, or quarantining, or whatever, if you want to have autonomy, I, I don't believe the current statement there conveys that.
So what I heard Liz say is the second bullet, if it was added to the athletic section, you feel that would cover us? So that's what we'll do, we'll add, should local conditions change, the district reserves the right to make a change to the mask requirement.
You want to limit it to masks?
Well, I guess the only question is, Andy, when we, the, the other problem you're going to have is we're going to change seasons, and so we're going to go from where the sports are, field hockey and soccer, where they're outside, and the only indoor sport you're having to think about is volleyball, to where all of your sports are inside, and is that going to change our feeling about mask? I don't know.
Well, what we did last year was, prior to the winter, Brian brought forth a proposal of how we would deal with the winter season, and that's what I'd like to recommend again this year, because that's just so far away in the world of COVID.
Then maybe we just add the extra words, like for fall sports. And, and this is the reopening plan, and then we do winter, and then we do spring, because those are all very different factors, and then the way we're seeing the data, they're very different.
Yep. I'm fine with that, I think we can make those changes, and, you know, if you choose to approve it, we'll just amend it, and Gina's been taking diligent notes, we'll make those changes.
Did you hear that, Tom? She didn't miss a beat. Do we have the ability to test kids for COVID at the high school and middle school?
You, you do, in terms of the sense that we could sign up with an agency that would do pool testing, and then parents would have to agree to be part of the pool testing. And I'm not sure how much bang for the buck there will be with that, but I will tell you, I'm interviewing a couple of the pool testing companies, because if you don't get in before the school year starts, you're basically out of the running. So I can sign up and basically do absolutely nothing for the whole year. Or I could, you know, or.
As long as you sign up?
As long as I sign up. So my intent is to interview the couple of companies that are out there, and there's a wide berth of them, there's, you know, your, your medical clinics around and all of those places and some others. So the goal would be simply to get ourselves in the queue, as I would call it, and then as we started to go through the year, if there was a service or something that they offered that the community and families want to take advantage of, we could do that.
But that's like a pool, not like Johnny comes down the hall and is in the nurse's office, and now we want to test him.
So if they came down and a school nurse, we don't have the ability to have those tests in the nurse's office?
We, we don't intend to test in the nurse's office.
Okay.
No, we, our, our recommendation would be to go to be tested.
I mean, they're publicly available, and, and one of the emails that we got this week, basically they were running a camp off of the, the test kits that you can buy at Sam's for like $10 apiece. So I, I think that it's certainly easy enough to come by at this point. It's about the equivalent of buying a pregnancy test.
I mean, to start our school year last year, I could count on like two hands how many of the rapid tests we, I mean, it was so hard to get in, but now it's, it's so widely available through pediatrician offices, urgent care everywhere, so.
Are there any other questions? I have a couple of questions, Tom, do you?
Are we doing questions or comments?
I think we're doing both. I think we're going to do the whole discussion, come up with what the plan looks like, and then.
Because I think we sort of have kept comments, because we were asking questions.
Okay, let's do questions first, and then we'll do comments, okay? So start with questions. Okay.
I wish you we were following directions, you know, Tom and I.
Yes, I do, very well.
The first section of Health and Safety says, decisions regarding masks will be made by the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board at their meeting. Are you referring to this meeting?
Yes.
And then you're, you're asking, when you, in the next bullet where you say the district reserves the right, that doesn't, to me, give the administration the authorization. Is it your intent that that will be, the board authorizes the administration?
In, in the motion that Dawn had provided for the approval, is where she had placed the authorization to make changes via my office.
Do you want me to read the motion?
Sure.
It's to accept the reopening plan as presented, incorporating the decision of the board that masks be something, authorize the student superintendent to make adjustments to the plan as deemed necessary based on local conditions, and require board notification of any such changes.
Okay, no, no. Further down, it says, students, teachers, and staff who have symptoms should stay home. Is this, is this purely a recommendation, or is this a requirement? And if it's a requirement, how is it monitored or enforced?
That's why it's, I mean, we, we will do our best to strongly encourage everybody.
But it's not a requirement?
No, because we can't enforce it.
It, when it says students and, and. It, when it says students and staff who have been identified will be notified, how are they going to be notified?
The same way as they were last year. The difference is we don't place them in quarantine. So we're going to complete the contact tracing, identify anyone who's close contact and then notify. Oftentimes it was in, by a phone call prior to the district communication. Oh, yeah, yeah, from the school administration, sometimes the, the school nurse, depending on the circumstance.
Going down instructional with a quarterly collaboration, how is PLC being used in this timeframe? Does that, does that not offer an opportunity for, for regular activities or are they too departmentalized?
So the PLCs, you know, will be Friday morning as, as they have been in years past. And those are, you know, let's just say you have a, I'll use science. You have a chemistry PLC, you might have an honors chemistry PLC, a chemistry, so for the different courses. So you might have an algebra one, an algebra two one, but a teacher is going to teach multiple classes. So they're part of multiple PLCs. So that time is eaten up very quickly. So last year, what was incredibly effective is providing additional dedicated time for more of that broad-based planning to ensure continuity between multiple courses or multiple courses taught by multiple instructors. To make sure that they're all on the same page moving forward, especially in light of all the work that was done in June determining either cohort skill gaps or individual learning needs of individual students. And so in one of the, there will be two hours dedicated to planning for how all of those pieces.
That's all the PLC, right?
It's all in PLC, but more of that global, okay, so we, we got all the data, we planned for it in August. Now it's November. How do we adjust the, the, the plan to ensure that we meet those needs?
But I guess my question is, what is going to happen in that quarterly collaboration that isn't already going on in PLC?
It's taking a look at that plan that was developed.
So you're not, oh, I thought, I thought you were saying that is part of the second hour of PLC.
PLC is only one hour and it flies by.
Okay.
There's just not enough time.
Okay. What's the reason for assigned seating?
For contact tracing.
Maybe it's semantics, but you said excess furniture is being returned. If it's excess, why is it being returned?
Excess furniture was all removed, excess meaning in order to get the six feet of spacing, bookshelves which were, held books. And we basically said you don't have access to these this school year.
Okay, so, so it isn't really excess, it was just, it was.
It was determined to.
It's necessary furniture, but it had to be removed. So is this, is this driven by the reduction of six feet to three feet?
Yes.
Okay. When the IEP and 504 meetings can be transferred to remote, who can request that? Only the parents or can staff members request that as well?
It's a team decision. It's a team decision, so any member of the team.
Okay. And you, you mentioned that the school councils are going to be providing additional support. Can you just give a general idea of what those supports, what, what form they might take?
Additional check-ins, additional activities with those students. For, you know, the most basic example is on our ninth grade orientation day, it's ninth grade, ninth graders are welcome. Transfer students are welcome and the students who were remote all year last year are welcome. So just bringing them in to re-acclimate them, pieces like that.
Is, is there a specific reason why the, the shared food items are, are, are being kept out? I just haven't heard that kind of activity as, as being linked anymore to specifically to COVID. Is that, is that likely to be a policy that's going to carry on just because we don't?
That's sort of been a policy that was attempted to be put in place for years now. So this just makes it happen.
COVID or reopening, correct?
Now, if you, if you read the handbook for the middle school that we, we do last meeting, the changes in it pretty much got rid of all the celebratory food.
Yeah, but I was wondering why it's showing up here too.
So I, I basically took last year's plan and amended anything that would change or still be in place that was different from prior years. So it was mentioned last year and I just wanted to ensure that that was still in place.
Gina, refresh my question. Is the same language in the, because I remember looking at it at the middle school level. Is that in the high school handbook now too about like no party food and all of that?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
It's in all six of our handbooks.
Okey dokey.
And I also had, had the question about having a separate mask ruling in extracurricular versus what's in the, in the classroom? Because maybe you're thinking about sports specifically, but I, I don't understand necessarily why we would want a different policy for extracurricular as we do for other activities going on inside the school.
The only exception was athletics and that was more based on NHIAA. When the recommendation came to us.
But aren't we saying that, that we're taking control over that?
Yes.
So is, is that statement a reflection of current NHIAA ruling or, or what we want for our policy?
So in the springtime, we also switched to ma- masks. So we opened with masks optional outside. And then based on various cases that came up, we had to switch to masks on at recess. And I'm giving you the elementary example. We switched back to masks optional outdoors at, right around the same time that NHIAA in the spring sports season deemed that masks were no longer mandated by their authority. And so it, it coincided with what we were already doing for outdoor time.
I, I think that the planned revision that has already been discussed where the wording will reflect the fact that it's an administrative thing is, is more valuable than, than having this kind of a naked statement. That's, that's my opinion. On the next, facilities will require, facilities used by outside organizations will require approval by superintendent's office. I'd just like to, that it be noted that it, it also has to comply with the policy.
Correct.
So it's, it's.
So we can note that.
This almost, this almost sounds like it's an override. I don't, I don't anticipate that being the case.
No, it, it's more just that, just because we ran an event in the past doesn't mean we're going to run it this time.
No, I, I think I understand what you meant. I'm, I don't know how this relates to the more comprehensive document that's being prepared. But my, my point is that, that I, I think it's important that the policy be referenced. So that if people really want to understand the, the nitty gritty of, of what's allowed, what's not allowed, they can see the policy. And I think you, you potentially are going to gain authorization to exceed that, but probably not to be more liberal.
Any other questions? I have a few questions, so anyone else? Krista, did you have another one? You got, okay, so is there a reason we can't offer remote instruction?
It doesn't exist without the emergency order.
Okay, thank you.
So, so you're categorically prohibited from, from offering remote instruction?
Well, I asked that question today of legal counsel because it's, it's a balancing act. Right now, what we were told that we had the five days that we've always had for like what I'll call a blizzard bag or remote instruction to reduce snow days. It's still, I will say pending, who makes the call if we went fully remote. Now, there's no doubt.
I'm not even saying fully remote, even partially remote, offering the dual mode.
Well, to a dual mode, I can tell you that I don't think we'd be returning to room and Zoom.
But are you prohibited from that?
As, as of right now, yes.
Because if we can't room and Zoom, we don't have instructors.
And besides that.
No, no, I mean, are you prohibited, are you prohibited by regulation?
Yes, because the emergency authorization is over.
That when they said you had to come back and have in-person. That they, at that time, they authorized that you could, that schools could still have the option. I'm wondering when that went away.
When the emergency order was lifted in the spring.
Because there is a pre-existing thing that says all instruction must be in person?
Again, that's one of the questions I ask legal today because I don't know where that legal piece is coming from.
And if you, if you had, had a cohort that had to be out, I understand and I, I listened to your previous meetings and I agree, you don't want sick kids having to do it. But there's different things, sick kids and quarantined kids.
Well, there'll be, in my, to my knowledge, very limited quarantine.
Under present circumstances, I'm trying to understand in the future. If, if going forward, if, if, if things get worse, can you implement that without there being a, an explicit executive order triggering it?
At this point, no. So Tom, when, if, if I am saying that Krista was in close contact and I was positive, the district cannot place her in quarantine. So there, before you'd have one positive and then multiple folks around them that were placed in quarantine. That doesn't exist anymore. It's only the household. And then the one strange piece is if there happens to have been like a sleepover, then that other person, that other student would be placed in quarantine, but not by the district. We, we no longer have that authority. We no longer have the authority to provide remote instruction. If there was an outbreak, then we would be having different conversations with the commissioner to request a, you know, an exception to what's in place. No, that's fine, that's fine.
Or I guess, I guess it would fall under the policy IGBD or IGBG, which is homebound instruction, which is usually only for certain circumstances. That probably the request regained, which is I just don't want to send my child to school. I don't feel comfortable. So therefore I think the district should provide me a remote option would not satisfy the policy.
But Velax is an option.
But Velax is always an option. Who are you selling me on Facebook?
My other question, or, so we have not added any days to our professional development. We're still just, we're using the same number of days that's contracted, that's in the contract, okay?
Well, because in the past we've had to make modifications.
Right, last year we added professional development days, correct? We had more professional development days and removed some student days, but we are not doing that this year. We are using the same number of professional days. I'm asking the question, yes?
Last year, if you recall, the governor allowed
Right.
three days that were, were student days to be counted as professional development.
Okay.
That no longer exists.
That doesn't exist, okay. And then do we have a focus of professional development this year?
Yes.
Okay.
So we went through that today as part of our retreat. And the, the big opening, if you will, is, is all about meeting the students where they are and bringing them forward for mastery learning, taking into consideration their different needs and, you know, the different methodologies of how you meet their needs. After that, we move more into a social emotional learning focus and how to take a look at the needs, you know, through that lens.
Okay.
And then there's also the, the specific two hours of planning for the data they receive from the prior year's cohort.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? So now we'll move, yes, Cindy?
Sorry, I have one.
It's okay.
Since the community uses our gyms and we're not going to be having cafeteria in them, will the community be allowed to use the gyms again this year?
So that is part of the facility used by outside organizations. So some of our, some of our schools do not have the capacity to have lunch in other places. And so there will be some restrictions on some spaces just based on circumstances.
And those, if they were allowed in, they have to follow the building mandate?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions? Because I'd like to move to comments. Okay, I have time for comments now. Are there any comments? Somebody said they had comments.
I'm sure we all have comments.
I'll start, I'll start, which I'm not usually the one that starts.
But go Cindy, go.
But go. You know, I've, I've listened to the community, I've read the emails. I think the thing that I struggle with is going against administration because they live it day to day. But the one thing that sticks to my mind is we've had other policy, maybe not life threatening. I understand that we have had pushback and conversation over and over again if it harms one student. And I feel like that we have heard a lot of students that have been harmed by the masks, by the closures. And I don't think that any PD that we can do is going to be helpful if the kids aren't coming to the building because they're afraid to because of masks or not masks. But I do feel like that I have to go with no masks, mask optional, you know. And I understand we're a big, we're not as big district as Merrimack, Bedford, Goffstown just said yesterday, they're not going to do masks. It's going to be optional. We're a long way from where we were last year when we started this with the mask mandate. And I just think that mentally for the kids to have to come back in the building with masks on is going to be harmful to their mental health.
Thanks Cindy.
We can go around the table, I guess.
That might be the easiest way, Liz.
Okay, so I, I guess I'll, spoiler alert, I'm in line with Cindy at this point. And I guess I'm going back on the data. And the cohort that we're dealing with in this school is different than the Hollis or Brookline elementary districts. So our kids, other than a handful of children who are going to turn 12 during the month of September, are all eligible to be vaccinated. And if you look at the data, the Moderna vaccine and the Pfizer vaccine both have about a 94, 95% efficacy rate. And you have about 100% rate of success in making sure that the child does not become severely ill. So that's pretty good. And I, if those of you that know that my husband does drug development, I mean, I've kind of had to like ask this question to him is, you know, would you send kids back without mask? And his answer is yes, I would send our children back without mask because they're fully vaccinated. Other kids who aren't vaccinated probably need to show up with a mask on for their own safety and probably the safety of the other kids in the building. But I really do think that you have to kind of look at all the data. And if you look at the death rate for the younger children, it's just not fair, it's not compelling. I'm really saddened by how upset and how volatile this room seems. And I'm kind of upset that people feel like they need to all wear red shirts and come to our meeting and stomp in. And I'm even taking their side, but I, I think they should have had enough faith. And some of the comments at the beginning of the meeting were really indicating that they didn't have any faith of us and that we weren't representative of the community. And I just, I think they really need to sit back and reflect on who's actually on this board and the data that we're actually looking at. The other statistic or percentage that I just can't get past is when you look at suicide rates in young girls is up 50%. So I have three teenagers I've spent the summer with and I've gone into each of the rooms at some point during the summer to make sure they were still breathing. I can tell you I did never do that in my parenting with my older child and I have never done that pre-COVID. So I know from my own experience, it is very difficult to do a meeting with a mask on. I cannot imagine trying to instruct teenagers and read the nuances on their face with a mask on their face. I am dreading a meeting I have to do tomorrow with clients because we are going to be masked up according to the firm's policy. I'm hoping I can do it outside because frankly, I need to be able to talk to them and see their face and for them to see me and have a real conversation. So based upon those numbers, so I guess it's 94, 95 and 50, I want to send these kids back with mask optional. And I really do think there's something about respecting parents' choice. Some of our parents are going to choose not to vaccinate their kids. Some of the kids are going to decide, some of our parents are going to decide it's not safe to send their kids back to school because we're going to go back mask optional if that's how we choose to do. And I think these are people, individual decisions that people are going to have to make. We've never had to make these. We've never had to make these decisions before. These are really hard times, but in, at the end, we're all going to have to look at our own kids and our own family and stand by the decisions that we've made through this. And I'm very comfortable sending my two kids to the co-op with their vaccines and without a mask.
So, I will agree, this is, these are really tough decisions, and I will also agree that I hate masks. But, we're tasked with the job of educating these children, and I think the one thing everyone can agree on in the last two years, that is, that in-person learning is way more effective, and certainly better for everyone's mental health. And, and I, I hear all the students that don't want to come back with masks. I don't know any student that wants to wear a mask. I have four children, and they're in different situations, but my youngest is at UNH, and she has to wear masks indoors. I, I just feel that we have gotten so much information. I've read more medical studies than I ever have in my entire life, and we've gotten information, all these emails and information saying, you have to wear masks, you have to do it, this is the best thing in the world. We've gotten masks to say, oh my God, they're killing these children. All medical information, all, all information from different doctors. We've also gotten information from doctors in our own community. We've received letters, a letter that had, I think, eight to 10 doctors on. We've received letters from individual physicians in our community, not across the country, but who live in our community and are well aware of what's happening in our community, and they're sending their children to our schools. And they feel that masks are important. And what I'm seeing is that, that the reason the masks are important is not just one side wears them, but that everyone has to have them. Now, I know, this isn't a perfect plan, nothing is perfect. Not, wearing the masks, different masks, they're going to be dirty. I understand that, nothing is perfect. But I do believe it's our job to try to provide in-person learning to as many students as we can, and keep them as safe as possible. And I'm not talking about deaths. I, I, I hear this, and no kids have died, some kids have died. Okay, it's not just about deaths, it's about keeping children, in my perspective, healthy and, and safe. I would hope that we would get to a point, sooner rather than later, where we could change, and if we do go with a mask mandate, to change the masks, because I would obviously prefer kids not to wear it. I'd prefer not to wear a mask all the time, and was very happy when it came off. And I, and I have to believe, even three weeks ago, I thought, oh, easy B, it'll be easy, mask optional, of course, because the numbers are going down. But here's what I see. When we were wearing masks and people were getting vaccinated, the numbers were going down. The minute we stopped wearing masks and people stopped getting vaccinated, they went back up. I'm not a scientist, I'm not a doctor, that's just anecdotal, but it is there. It's, that's what I see. And I, I do want to keep kids safe. And to continue, when we talk about our own children, I have four children, two of them got COVID, one in February, one in April. They are still dealing with the side effects of it. They are still dealing with it. It's, it did not go away after 10 days. And I've watched it, and my kids are, they are healthy, they exercise, they eat right, they do the right thing. It is not, they don't have any pre-existing conditions. So, I don't necessarily want to see that happen to other people's children. I certainly respect parents' right to choose. Absolutely, I respect that, and I, I don't ever want to be someone that's trying to tell parents how they have to raise their children. Everyone has their right to do that. I just feel, as my job on the board, it's my job to make sure kids stay safe and can be in-person learning, because holy cow, we got to keep these kids in person. And I, I just get nervous that we're going to get to a point where we have an outbreak, and then we have to send all the kids home. And that's not great for their mental health either. Just, you know, you're in, you're out, you're in, you're out. I just think that's crazy too. So, I know that masks are affecting children's mental health, but I think there's a whole lot of other factors affecting their mental health, including the climate that was in, has been in the last two meetings we've had in this room. I think there's a lot of things affecting children's mental health. Certainly masks are part of it, but it is a piece of the puzzle. And I just want kids to stay healthy, I want, or hopefully, stay as healthy as we can make them by mitigating as much spread. It's not a perfect solution, but I think if we can at least start off the year with masks so that we can see how it goes, and then, I really would like to see in September if we can change our plan or move with other ideas and other factors that would determine us being able to, if we go with a mask mandate, taking the mask off.
Thank you, Krista. I'm going to go to you, Beth.
Oh, sure.
I'm going to go around that way.
Okay, we're going.
Yeah, we're moving around a little bit.
All right. Well, I wasn't quite prepared yet, okay.
Sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm just kidding. I, I mean, I've thought about this a lot, and we can go round and round. I, I guess I should start by saying, I, as is, I don't support this plan. But before I explain why, I want to first recognize, like, the extraordinary work that's been done in this. So it's not, the reason I don't support this is, is nothing personal at all. I'm, I'm still, you know, hugely thankful and impressed and in awe of everything that you guys have been able to accomplish. So, not that. You know, I too have personal thoughts on this. For my kids, I feel safe with my kids being without a mask, but that's not why I'm here. I'm not here to tell you that my kids are safe. I'm here to represent the community. And it's really, really hard to represent a community right now that's so divided, because it really is a very divisive, you know, situation that we're dealing with. But I think, given everything we've heard, we've really heard a mix of things, so that, that's part of the driving force for me. But tonight, we heard from some students, and they were absolutely incredible to come out and speak tonight. And I, that's just the tip of the iceberg. There are so many students that have stories like that. And I think we are doing harm if we reopen with the mandates in place, because there's some students, one in particular spoke tonight, there's no way we can meet those needs if, you know, when there's visual and hearing and think, and sitting alone in a library, these things just don't work. They don't work, and they don't meet needs. And I think we're doing harm. So, I, I, at this point, like Liz and Cindy had mentioned, I, I think that at this point, given the community and given what we know right now, it, it should be an optional thing. And with that in mind, you know, masks are not all created equal. Cloth masks, surgical masks, and 95s, they are much, much more effective, you know, and, and parents have a choice in what kind of mask too, and if there's concern. So that's, that's part of my thought process behind that. It's a parent decision to help protect their children. But then the last part, the other part where I really struggle with the plan is just, although I want the fluidness of the plan and the ease of our superintendent being able to change the plan, whether this board goes tonight with opening with mandated masks or the board goes with optional masks, I have concern about just authorizing the change of it. And it's not, again, because I don't trust the work our superintendent's done, because they've been fabulous, you know, everything they've done, but I just need more data points. What's our point? You know, if we open with masks mandated, at what point and level of infection and things, and I know it can't be answered right now, but that's why I'm uncomfortable with that blanket, you know, response, that you can just change at any point, because it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of responsibility, and it's a lot going on. So, either way, whether it was mandated masks or optional, whatever the board goes with, I think we need more of an understanding of what would prompt the change, so that's.
So, what I'm hearing is that, no matter what we say about masks, you're not going to vote for the plan?
Well, not necessarily. I'm not saying, well, that's why I'm very uncomfortable, just the wording of it, and if, if, you know.
So if there was wording in the plan to indicate that there would be more detail on the matrixing?
Yeah, and it can be detailed to come. I just, I understand, because it's something we talked about, I talked about it at the Brookline meeting last night. I just, and I, I mean, I wish I had, you know, perfect data to offer.
So, you would like the plan to have a comment in there that says that there will be details on the, on the matrix?
Yeah, it's almost like a major, I mean, we've talked about that, and other districts have done that, and a lot of them are choosing community numbers or school numbers. But I just think that it's something, it's an awful lot of responsibility and stress to put on one individual person too, to make that change. And so although I trust your judgment completely, I want to know your thought process, if you're making those changes, you know, really.
So, I, I need to clarify.
I'm sorry.
So does that mean that you don't want to give the superintendent authorization to make plans and change the plans based on a matrix that he establishes and presents to us in September? Or is it that you won't support the plan because there's no language that says that?
No, I, I would be willing to support a plan, knowing that that's the intention behind it, because I, and I think that it is, but that's my point, is we can't just decide masks or no masks on how we feel, and if it makes somebody feel more, or what one organization recommends, I, I just, our, our community, Hollis-Brookline is different than our entire state, than the country. Like, we need to be looking at local data, is, is what my, my thought process is, and I just want to know the thought process.
So you want the language in the plan to reflect that he will, that the superintendent will add a matrix to it in September? And, and if that's in there, and the mask requirement is such that you like it, whether it's, that it's optional, you would support the plan?
Yeah, I would support that, and I, I think it's, it's to be transparent with parents. We can't just open with a mask mandate and say, well, we'll, we'll look at it and stuff, or the opposite. Like, we need to have some, some clarification. Parents are making big decisions on whether they send their kids to school based on masks.
I understand, Beth, but at the end of the day, if we don't approve a reopening plan, if we all decide that there's one thing wrong in this plan, and we don't approve a reopening plan, I'm not sure where we go. So, I need to be sure, mask optional or mask required, whatever that is, that's how the vote's going to be. But we need to have a plan to reopen the schools, or else we don't open the schools. So, I'm trying to clarify.
I feel like you're kind of berating Beth into trying to, I don't like the way this discourse is going.
Okay, well, she doesn't have to vote for it, I get it.
Because we don't have, we could walk away tonight and not approve this plan. We would need to have another meeting, so, and we would, and that would be okay with me. And I would actually prefer that, because I think there's enough things that are different about this district versus the elementary districts, and there's some things in this, I mean, I didn't include in my comments that I think are inconsistent, that if you choose to mask, then you've got to, then you really, if we low mask, then I think you've got to completely rewrite this policy to be consistent with that. Because right now, it's not written with a take on, like, we're going to be consistent with masks. Because basically, as soon as you go outside, you can be as close to anybody else you want to, and then there was no reason to wear a mask all day. So, I, I think that's a, I think that's a pretty important distinction. If, how we choose to go on mask, I think will inform our decision on how we would want that rest of that policy to, to go. So, I don't think she's saying I only have one issue.
Right, okay, I just wanted to clarify.
I think you're just trying to get through this, so I think you're kind of putting her into a box.
Sorry.
Well, I, I do, I mean, I do feel a little boxed in, but I'm also, you know, I'm not bothered. If I, I can't support it, if I can't support it, I have to sleep at night after I make a vote. So, and if the, the rest of the board supports it, but that, that's a concerning point to me, and it's, it's for the pressure and the responsibility it puts on our superintendent. It's for the, the communication to our parents and what the intention is. It's, it's for a lot of reasons, but, but yeah. On that note, I'm sorry I can't articulate what I'm feeling, but I, it's just, it's a concern, but thank you, Liz.
Well, can I just say one thing, because you brought up something, Liz, about extracurricular. To me, masking the children in school is, if, if we do that at the beginning, to keep them safe, because they're required to come to school. They have to go to school. That's, that's something they have to do. They don't have to be in sports, they don't have to be in clubs, they don't have to do that stuff. If they don't feel safe doing that, then don't do that. But I just feel the mask in school help mitigate any spread as much as we can, not perfect, that we can, because, very honestly, I was looking at this, it, 50% of kids 12 through 19 in Hollis and Brookline are vaccinated. Okay, we don't know if those are homeschool, private school. We don't know how those relate to Hollis, to our actual school, but that's a flip of a coin to me. That's a flip of a coin. So, one's vaccinated, one's not. It's a flip of a coin. So that's where I get the anxiety, but I, I see what you're saying about. So that's why I'm saying, I think it's different, the extracurricular, to the being in school.
So, I was so hopeful at the beginning of this summer that we would not be in this position, that we would not be talking about masks, that I wouldn't be wearing a mask tonight. I don't want to be wearing a mask. I get it, I completely get it. And I agree that there are mental health issues that are real with students, some students, not all, and it needs to be monitored. I mean, the reality is, is it's cropping up, not just in students, but in adults as well. But I don't think that's just because of masks. I think it's because of the unprecedented time and pandemic that we have been living in for the last year and a half. So to just blame it on masks, I think is a little short-sighted. And I completely hear the parents who want choice, and they don't want people telling them how to raise their kids, or what choices they can and they can't make. But what about the families who don't have a choice, because they've gotten immunocompromised child or another situation where the kid just can't get vaccinated? Their choice is limited in terms of their education if we say mask optional, when masks would protect those children who otherwise can't be protected by the vaccine. So, I mean, they become this vulnerable part of our community, and they deserve the same public in-person education as any other student. I really hope that local conditions change. I hope that we could move to mask optional at some point, but I do think for now, starting off the school year, wearing masks is the safest choice for our school community.
Thank you.
Thanks.
First of all, I think it's kind of absurd that we're making this decision, or that we have to make this decision, because for the most part, I don't think we're qualified. And I, I don't, I don't mean, mean that to be rude, but it's, it's really sad that it's, the system is set up in such a way that it's become, it's come down to people who have opinions and are doing their best to decipher things they've never had to understand before. But that, that's the situation we're in. The second part of it is, I'm a very strong believer in, in personal rights and personal freedom. I grew up in New Hampshire. I left New Hampshire briefly and couldn't tolerate it. Came back to New Hampshire when it was time to, to set up my permanent residence. But that said, I believe that, that personal freedoms exist, but they extend only to the point where they start to infringe on someone else's personal freedom. So, I have, I have the right to take risks for myself, but I don't necessarily have the right to put you at risk. The interesting thing about all of the data that, that people have been sending us is that people on both sides of the issue are sending the same data. And it's what they're looking at in it, and what their, their, where their priorities, where their belief, and to some degree, where their trust lies. So, I'm saying, what do I think we know? And we know that, that masks, not, I'm not talking respirators, but masks primarily act as spit shields. So, they function to protect others much more than they function to protect the wearer. So a mask requirement's primary benefit is to protect others from the wearer. And to serve that purpose of effective curtailment of spread, everybody needs to wear them. They only work, if they're going to work at all, if they're used properly. And, and I think we, we all have seen that very few people actually wear masks properly. They need to be maintained, they need to be fitted properly, you got to be careful with the handling. And we've heard reports, and for those of you who have probably been around, around the school, particularly around kids, it doesn't, it doesn't happen much. I mean, I, I often see them not covering the nose. I often see them falling down, or people having to adjust them, and the, the things that say, wear them, say, but don't do these things. And so, I'm conflicted, because although I think that the theory is great, I really question whether the impact of wearing masks in our school is, is fulfilling even a partial goal. And you weigh that against some of the real risks, but also some of the... a partial goal. And you weigh that against some of the real risks, but also some of the perceived risks. So, and I'm not, I'm not showing my hand right now intentionally.
It's helpful.
Vaccinations do not prevent COVID, and they don't prevent the transmission. There's, there's data that proves that. Doesn't mean I don't think you should get vaccinated, but it means that, that just because someone is vaccinated, doesn't take them out of the, the pool of people who present risks to other members of the public. Vaccines seem to, the data seems to show that they help the vaccinated person, but that person still presents a societal risk of being an asymptomatic carrier. So the question I have, what's our primary goal on the board? What's, what's our priority? What's our responsibility? Is it education? Is it the health? Is it health? Is it the health of the student? Is it the health of the community? And what kind of health? You know, you're talking a lot about social, emotional learning, mental health. We've all, we've, we've often struggled over the decades of saying, what, is it appropriate to put this increasing pressure on the public schools to fulfill society's gaps in, in caring for the student? And are our, are our teachers, are our staff really equipped to meet those needs? What should be our response to public direction? So i- if there's a mandatory mask requirement, how do you enforce it? How would schools, schools ensure that the masks are used properly? And if they're, if it's not going to be enforced, is, is there value to it? And then add into it the fact that, in the reality, even our own policies, as soon as you go outside, masks can come off. And at that point, you've got kids in intimate contact with one another. So are we kidding ourselves when we say that putting masks on are going to do something different? My, one of my concerns is what options are available to students whose parents will not allow them to attend school because of whatever policy we pick? Either way, I've heard students who, parents, and they've written to us and said, "I can't send my kids to school if you don't have mandatory masks." And we've got others that said, "I'm not sending my kids to school if they're going to be required to wear a mask." I don't, I don't have disbelief in what Andy's told us. I have disappointment, because to a certain extent, I feel like obstacles and barriers have been placed to give us the options that we may need to fit the needs of our school. So what it really boils down to is, is what do we as individuals, and what do we as a board consider to be acceptable risk? Acceptable risk in terms of risk of kids getting sick, acceptable risk of students being prevented from participating, risks of them being disturbed and hurt by wearing it. I don't have that answer, but these are the things, I'm just sharing it floating around. My inclination right now, based on the misgivings, is that although I would love to see, I wish I loved the word, I would support mandatory masking if I believed that it would be done properly and comprehensively, simply because I'm, I would like to see COVID stopped. I would like to see transmission ended. And the data that I have seen, despite what some other people say, that the same data that the people who say masks don't work have sent to me says that you don't have to only curtail aerosol if the wearer's wearing it. But you can't wear the same mask for seven dollars and have it be effective. You can't have it fallen down on your chin and have it be effective. You can't drop it on the ground and pick it up and have it be effective.
Can't wear the same mask.
And in light of the realities of what I'm, what I'm recognizing, why, why punish people who are, are so distressed by mask-wearing for something that I think is, is almost placebo in content?
Okay, my turn. So I agree that we're not experts in this, and I'm going to lean on the ones that I know. I've heard a lot of comments that we can't trust things like the CDC or the American Pediatric Association, but their recommendation is universal masking indoors, K to 12. I don't think, I, I'm not going to argue with that. I hate the masks, too. I am concerned about our students' mental health. I agree with Kate. I'm not so sure. It's just masks. We've thrown a pan, these kids have been thrown into a pandemic, a global pandemic. Millions of people have died across the world. They're scared. They're lonely. They're upset. They hear about fires and Afghanistan and everything, and they're scared. And every single day, it comes at them through their social media and through their apps. It's constant. It's constant information. We did not grow up like this. That is what's driving anxiety and depression and mental health issues. For every kid that the mask makes a mental health issue because they don't want to wear it, there are kids who want everyone in them, and they're afraid. So mental health is something that I totally, 100%, no longer going to waffle, is this the school district's responsibility? It is. It has to be. They're there. They're with us, seven, eight hours a day. And for every kid who shows up in their mask terrified, there's a kid who doesn't want to be in a mask. I don't think we can solve that problem one way or the other. I think we need an advisory system. I think we need a program that will help our kids, give our kids a place to go. I think we need to start seriously considering that as an option in our district. I think we need to focus on mental health and social and emotional learning in a way that we have never done before. It is really the only way that they were going to, doesn't matter what they learn, at the end of the day, they need to be able to function as human beings. So I think that's paramount. I would support a, an opening plan that has mask requirement. I'm hearing that probably we won't have an opening plan that doesn't have a mask requirement. I'm not sure how I'll vote if that's the case. But I would also support a matrix system that outlines exactly when and if we would put a mask up. And I just have one more thing. My concern is, starting the year without masks with the potential of having to add masks in is going to be much harder on our students. Much harder. The reason people are so mad right now is because we've had two months without masks. So I'm concerned that we start, and then in two weeks, we have transmission, and we have an outbreak, and now we have to ask kids to put masks on. But, well, we don't think masks work, but do they work? But don't they work? I don't, I don't know what the answer is. But I agree with Krista. Last year, we had masks, and we had contact tracing, and we had quarantining, which we don't even have that tool right now. Tools have been removed from us. We had fewer kids in the building last year. Tools have been removed. We have two tools at our hands here, and masking is one of them. And the other one, if you are listening, is vaccination. And the fact that we only have 50% of our population vaccinated is a shame. And one of the speakers spoke to that. And that is your choice, sure. You have a choice to not be vaccinated. But now you want to not be vaccinated, to not have to wear a mask, but to be in school full-time in person. That's great for you. That's fantastic. But the kids who are scared, they get to go to school, they put their, their mask on, they follow the rules, they got their vaccine, and guess what? They get to be scared. So, you know, that's a decision we can make, but I will probably not vote for a plan that doesn't have a requirement for masks. I'm all done. Okay. So we are, that's actually a discussion we were in. So we will be just probably making a motion and not talking very deliberations. That would be great. Is that possible? Okay.
HB Elevates update, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I was going to just jump in first, and then I know you have some, okay. Two things for HB Elevates. I'd like to refer the advertisement and recognition policy, go back to the policy committee, because we're getting requests from HB Elevates to see if the board would want to consider advertising in some of our fields. And they're more than willing to work with the board and the community to do it appropriately. And my other piece is that through the work of HB Elevates, we're expecting a donation of computers from Southern New Hampshire University. That would be coming back to the board probably in September to officially accept it. We're looking at somewhere between 25 and 40 laptops that are coming offline at SNU that would fit very well into our inventory. They've already been reviewed by IT as being something that we would, we would welcome. So I'm working with Rich and HB Elevates to coordinate all that. But at some point in the future, you should be expecting to have a deliberate item to accept those. And then I know Tom has a couple pieces.
The first, the first one is what you were talking about, about the advertising. And unfortunately, our meeting has been postponed four times, and so we haven't had the meeting that was supposed to come before this. Because what I've asked HB Elevate to provide is some idea of what type of advertising they're proposing, what changes. And I've had individual conversations with members of the board, but we haven't been able to meet as a board determined it. At this point, the only question that I think is relevant to this board is, do you want to categorically consider adding, allowing paid advertising, because our current policy categorically prohibits it? And that was done after much deliberation. It was not a casual decision, because it was made in the face of proposed monies and for advertising. It was, it was things like putting some of, where it would be beverages, beverage stuff on the scoreboards, or, or local companies that wanted to. And when that discussion took place, we had potential opportunities, and the decision at that point, we didn't have the field, the decision at that point was no. So I don't want to ask the policy committee to go back and propose a policy if that is the majority opinion still.
So basically, you'd like a little discussion on that?
Just to sense, sense of the board, are people willing to entertain that? And if the answer is no, then I can communicate that back to HB Elevate. I mean, we do allow recognition, but the policy requires that it be done in a standardized format and stuff, so no, no billboards or anything. If the answer is yes, that they would like to consider it, I would hold off on asking the policy committee to review the policy until we get some input from HB Elevate as to what the nature of the possible advertising is, so that it gives the committee some margins of where, what they need to propose, rather than making it overly iterative.
Do we need to weigh in on that tonight, or could we?
I would just like to, I was hoping to, I mean, I was hoping to have some more information, but if we're going to do anything tonight, the best I can do is say, yeah, I'm not categorically opposed to it, or yes, I am categorically opposed to it.
I think I'm too fried to think about it too hard.
Well, I'm a little disappointed, because this isn't the first time I've asked a question. I asked it the last meeting.
Tom, I would entertain it. I think the main reason that we wrote that policy as it is, is because the concern was, would it fall within the community guidelines? But now that the field is behind the school, I don't think that we have to, I mean, when it was down at the other, people on Love Lane, we're going to have to look at it. There was other community issues.
We still have two fields down there, right?
Yeah, but I think he's talking, I mean, are you talking about every field? Are you talking about?
Well, I guess that's what we would do in policy.
That's still open for discussion, but, but it's categorical, and you're, so you're, you're
Open to discussing it.
Opening statement is, is, is meaningful.
I would be open to discussing it.
I'd be open.
Is there anyone who's just absolutely no way, I don't want advertising on the property?
No.
No one very interested in.
Looks like it needs to be go to, go to policy. But we, we, the policy committee would need more input from HB Elevates.
Yeah. That, Andy, do you, do you think there's anything so imminent that it can't wait to get that input?
No, I think the decision we just had of the consensus of the board is to, to go forward, then I would follow your lead on HB Elevates giving us some parameters of what they're thinking, and then sending that to policy so we don't work in a level. Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, we're going to move to deliberations. Sorry. I need to see what action the board will take regarding a fall meeting date regarding the Articles of Agreement. I need a motion to set the date of October 5th, 2021, for a meeting to, is that right? Was that October 5th?
October 5th, and I would say 7:00 PM.
To set a date of October 5th, 2021, at 7:00 PM, for a meeting to address proposed amendments to the Articles of Agreement. I need a motion.
So move.
Move by Beth, seconded by, moved by Tom, seconded by Beth. Okay. Is there any discussion on that? I think we covered it.
I'm on it, October 4th.
No, you can't have that.
Yeah, you want it on Monday night?
Okay, so Tuesday, October 5th. All in favor? 7:00. Okay, I need somebody to make the motion. Basically, I need a motion to accept the reopening plan as presented, incorporating the decision that the board, the, of the board that mask be, it sounds like optional was the one that's going to pass.
So do we have to take a vote on that first?
No, it's, we put it in the motion, and then we'll vote, I think. I don't, the motion is written that we add mask be optional, authorize the superintendent to make adjustments to the plan as deemed necessary based on local conditions, and require board notification of any such change. We have a blank here. So it's, we can vote on mask first? I, I don't know the best way to go about this.
The only question that I, I have in this context is, and to some degree, I would like some administrative input, but if there is a plan that has mandatory mask, and a very clear trigger point for relaxation, it sounded like there might also be support for that. I don't know.
Well, first of all, I'd like the board to understand that whatever you pass, we'll make happen. That's our job. We brought forward a plan. We brought forward a recommendation. It will not offend me in any way, shape, or form, whatever the board decides. What will happen tomorrow is we'll take whatever's decided, and we'll move forward and do our best to make it work, just like we did last year. So I don't want anybody to think that what we presented is, you know, it. Our job is to take what you give us and make it happen. In terms of the matrix, that's a struggle on us. I've looked at a number, and just so you know, it's, it's really difficult, because right now, most of the matrix have county data. And county is so different than Hollis and Brookline. The problem is just finding Hollis and Brookline. Now, it's, in some ways, it's easy to click on the little map and know the, the kind of cases, but it's not always accurate.
But is it appropriate, is it appropriate for us to be isolating ourselves in that consideration when the majority of people in, in Hollis and Brookline work outside the area?
Right.
Right. Well, like, right now, if you use the state's metric, that I, and I believe I'm correct in this, our county would be substantial right now. It goes high, substantial, and then moderate, and low. So the, the recommendation from CDC in that case would be masks. The recommendation from Department of Health and Human Services is to recommend masks indoors. So, but at the same time, having gone through last year and being in session, there were times when the county was high, and we were non-existent, you know? And, and two weeks ago, a little longer than two weeks ago, I, I think I was at zero in Brookline, and maybe one in Hollis. And in a period of 10 days, that went from one to 15 in Hollis, and from zero to, I think it was seven or eight in Brookline. And now we seem to, once again, what I'll say, plateaued for And now we seem to, once again, what I'll say, plateaued for, for whatever reason. You know, I don't know why it happens. It's, it's not like we, we get off of this, you know, chart, and it just keeps going like this. We really haven't seen that. We see a spike, we see a plateau, a lot of times, we see it come down for a little bit, and then we see another spike. Now, some of that is around holidays and, and things of that nature. Other things is the na, the natural progression of what we do. Now, grade seven to 12, I'm not naive to think that come 233, that there aren't carloads of kids heading out of that back parking lot, whose masks are now on the, the floor of the car. You know? My goal in my recommendation was try to get as many school days, because I don't know what the fallback is. It's not room and zoom, and right now, it's not fully remote. So if we have a spike that had significant numbers, then we're working with DHHS to determine what the next step is. So in some regards, to Beth's point, there may be more time between decisions this year, because the decisions won't be necessarily all local. But I don't want the board or the community to think that, you know, whatever the recommendation is, or whatever the board supports, is what we're gonna do to put forth our best effort, and do the best we can for kids.
I think to work off of what Tom was saying, in terms of do we really look at ourselves in a bubble, is that we then also have kids who are back to regular sports, and they're not just playing in Hollis and Brookline. So they are being regularly, you know, out in Hillsborough County and beyond, and I think that's a valid thing to keep in mind in terms of the matrix as well.
Yep.
But you also have to keep in mind that they all work somewhere. A lot of them work and stuff, too. I mean, that was the whole thing last year, was, you know, the transmissions that we got, did it happen in the school, or did it happen in the community? We have no way of really knowing.
I, I need to know how to go forward.
Would it be appropriate to have the plan start out with the metric, and say, because we don't even know that, what it'll be?
In September.
10 days from now. I mean, i- if the plan says, can we, can we propose a plan either tonight, or in the near future, that says, for example, that, that, and I'm gonna say this not because this is necessarily, I think, the right number, but that the, the county data puts us, if it's substantial or higher, it is masked, if it's, if it's moderate or lower, it is mask optional. I mean, so, something like that. And, and so that we have a, a clear milestone or metric, whatever you wanna call it.
I would support that. I'm still concerned about that, though, because I, it's very valid points, like our kids are in job places, and, and our parents are working, but it's, like, what I care about is what's happening in our schools, you know? And so there are communities that are using metrics specific to cases in their schools. So I like the idea, Tom, but I worry because...
Can you propose a metric?
No, I can't off that, like, not, like, I, that's the hard part, that's what I'm...
Okay, do you think you can generate a metric in, in a week and present it to us?
That's a, I, I, you know, that's something we could certainly talk about, I think it's...
I think what you're doing is a cop-out.
I, no, I, well, no, I mean, I think that it has to be more local to our numbers in our schools.
So what do you think it should be?
Well, it's based on the populations in our school. I mean, that's what a lot of places are doing, if it's under a certain number, under five cases, certain things like that, but it depends on the population, so you need to know how many kids attend our school, and how many, those kind of things, because what's happening in the county, I mean, I work in the county. What's happening in three towns from here is vastly different than what's happening here. So I don't think county data alone, and, and the metrics can have more than one thing that we look at, we look at county, but we should be looking at what's happening here in Hollis and Brookline, so I don't...
Wait, I'm confused, Tom, because if, I think if I listen to your comments, you would have been mask optional, because frankly, the masks don't really work that well, and because they, they aren't implemented correctly, and they really have more of a placebo effect. Now I'm thinking I misunderstood your comments.
No, you didn't, I'm, I'm, I'm differentiating between what I expressed before, that's my thought process, and we have, I think, a certain obligation to, to move beyond our individual thoughts. So from, from a thought process, what I said, that, that's me, but I don't know that my thought process and, and my personal philosophies are, I'm going to use that as a, as an absolute guideline. I'm listening to my colleagues here, and what they care about, I'm listening to the community, and I'm trying to form that into something manageable and definitive that we can give to our administration, despite the fact that I don't feel qualified to do that. No, I'm, I mean, I mean, so what, so what I'm saying is...
I wish we could stick this on a scale, and we can say, if it weighs more than 100 pounds, you go left, and if it...
Exactly, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for. And I'm, and, so I'm trying to understand, that's what we did last year, and we believed that last year was moderately successful, and very successful in the context of schools, is that there was, there were clear signals given to our administration as to when to turn it on, and when to turn it off.
But those signals came from DHHS, right?
Those, those are, yeah, they're not coming anymore, in, in such black and white terms.
Well, and they were never black and white from DHHS. No, I'm just being serious. They would, Bob Thompson, Gina, and myself made those decisions.
And what did, what were the decisions, what were the metrics that you used?
We read everything, we looked at what was going on in our schools, we anticipated, and we, we, we did listen to Dr. Chan, but it was, it's an unknown, it's still an unknown.
And are, are all of those tools still available to you?
The, the calls with Dr. Chan are not as frequent. What I was going to say in terms of the potential matrix, looking at our school is really important, but our students are in summer, and our families are traveling. Last year, travel was not, it was not an option. This year, it is. Families are going from all over, and then returning to school. We don't know what that looks like, and the impact of that potentially will not be seen until the second week of school. You know, so if you look, 5.8% positivity rate for the state, for the, our county, it's 6.7%. That's very high. If you look at the numbers, five new cases in Hollis today. Are those accurate? Are they all reported? I don't know. But those are the questions that we would, we would go back and forth and argue, and then argue with DHHS, and demand more answers that we didn't necessarily get, but we had to do our due diligence, and at some point, just cross your fingers and you hope you're doing right by all the school community, and, and the community at large. And there was no perfect matrix, because the data was never perfect. It's not perfect now, and to the point, like, tools are, are stripped from us this year, in terms of our ability to mitigate. For right or wrong reasons, I'm not gonna argue that, but it's, I just feel like everything that I knew, or, or went by last year, is different. To me, opening this year is 10 times more difficult than opening last year. And everybody thought last year was impossible, and we made it work. But this year, it's, it's that much more of a challenge. So I would love, I mean, I am very much, like, give me a matrix, I'll, I'll make a little flowchart, I'll make it work, but what do I put in the matrix? What do I put in there? I mean, I could use the county, because you're right, families are now going to work, whereas last year, they weren't. That's important, but how many of our parents work outside of home? How many of our students work at Market Basket? I mean, am I gonna ask every kid everything they do every hour of the day? I can't do that.
Can I ask you one question?
Yep.
Are you allowed to ask vaccination status?
So, that, we might have that data, if a parent supplied it. We are not recording it, we are only recording what we are legally required to record.
Holly, I mean, they, they spoke to that this week, I mean, you may certainly ask for voluntarily, your parents to share, but you cannot require it to be shared.
So you can't ask for voluntary, but you can't require people to report their vaccination status.
Not at this time.
So you can't know the percentage of students that are vaccinated in the building? You, you can't figure that out. You can get that voluntarily, but that's still not gonna necessarily give you the percentage.
Right.
Because that to me is like...
That's important.
That's a, like, that's the matrix, right? If we could get to...
It is important, but that's also a parent choice, and they're, they're widely available to our kids, and I, I have a lot of confidence through community members, conversations, and my own patients. The ones that want a vaccine have access to it, the ones that don't want one, haven't gotten it, and that's not gonna change, like, with the ma, and I think, to me, that's one of the biggest factors, is because our state has made it so readily available, I mean, it's, it's impossible to not get one if you want one, and...
I don't think you're gonna get above the 50%, because I think the rest of the people, it's not that it's not available, they just have chosen not to do it.
We have vaccines expiring in our state, I mean, that's, it's so widely available, we have so many options, and I think our community members are really smart and clear, and they're, they know that that's available, and they're making the best decisions they can for their families. So for me, that is the number one piece of mitigation, and it's not my responsibility to try to encourage or force, or not force a vaccine on a family. Like, they have, our students and our staff have the best possible mitigation at their fingertips, and if they choose to use it, props to them, and if they choose not to, I also say props to them. It's an individual choice that we can't force or make, so that's why I feel very strongly at this point. I mean, we're, we've done everything we have that we can right now. Masks are not worn in the schools the way they should be, and these are not masks. Like, what you're wearing, like, what I have, it, that's a mask, and that's something, but we can't force it. It's police, it's a constant police up. It, it's just, it doesn't work the way it should work in theory, and that's why I just, I can't support it.
So how do we move forward as a board? Do we vote on the masks first, and then vote on the plan?
I think someone makes a motion with that blank filled in, and then if it fails, then you make a different motion.
Yeah.
You make a motion to adjourn?
Exactly.
Okay, so can someone make, the motion is, you guys fill in the blank when I get to it, somebody. I need a motion by a member to accept the reopening plan as presented, incorporating the decision of the board that masks be...
Optional.
Optional. Authorize the superintendent to make adjustments to the plan as deemed necessary based on local conditions, and require board notification of any such changes. So moved. Moved by Beth.
Second.
Second by Cindy. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Did you, oh, you voted, you voted no? I didn't see the no. Okay, so, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the reopening plan as presented, incorporating the decision that masks be required, authorize the student to make adjustments, the superintendent to make adjustments to the plan as deemed necessary based on local conditions, and require board notification of any such changes. This might not be as easy as you think. Okay, so that's motion by, who motioned it?
She can motion, I'll second it, yeah.
Who, who did the motion, I'm sorry?
She can motion, I'll second it.
Okay, Kate motioned, Beth second. All those in favor?
I knew it was gonna go that way.
And, all those opposed? Okay, so now we don't have a reopening plan, so would you like, is the idea to meet again? I, I need you, you to tell me how to solve this issue, or not.
It sounds like there's a need for a matrix, and it sounds like there's concern by some members that students don't know how to wear masks, and that we can't make them wear them appropriately, and I don't agree with that. I think that some things can be done to make sure that students are wearing the right kind of mask, maybe not N95s, but we know that something is better than nothing, and that they can be, they can be taught to wear them correctly, and they can be told to put them back up if they're hanging below their nose, you know?
But just remember, it's gotta be done, somebody's gotta enforce that, and who's gonna enforce it?
And that's not their job. I mean, and you also, I think you've got to completely rewrite the policy as to lunch, lockers, anything that they're gonna be less than three feet, I, I mean, if you're, if you're really gonna take this scared approach, then we can't be maskless while we eat a sandwich. Krista and I are too close, and she's, we could go all day, we could go six periods during our day, and we could wear our mask in class, and then I'm this far away from her at lunch, and now I give it to her. So there was no reason to wear the mask for the six hours, because now I've infected her at lunchtime.
Except that you chose to sit next to Krista, and you chose to be near Krista at lunchtime, and you don't have a choice in the classroom.
Okay, well, it could be this girl that I don't like at all, and, and she just happens to have the same schedule that I do, and now she's sitting behind me at lunch. But I think, so I don't, I, I don't think it's, no, I don't think we're gonna go personal choice on this one, because these are still kids, and I really do think you've got, you cannot be this inconsistent. Either they're masked up completely all day properly, and we're supplying them, because they're, they're not these homemade doodads, or they're not worn.
Okay, so, gotcha. So now we need to approve a plan. How do we move forward? I mean, I'm sorry, I don't have a solution here. If, if what's holding, we need a vote one way or the other.
Tom's looking for a metrics?
Is that what you need, like, a, a, another meeting, a, another, because three of us voted...
I think there has to be, I think, I don't see the plan as proposed with just a simple on or off of masks satisfying this group. I think, I think we need more than a, basically, split decision if the board is gonna do it. We've gotta have something we all like. That's my opinion.
What did you just say?
He wants something we can all like.
I don't think that's possible.
I'm not sure that that's possible.
Well, and I, I think what makes that so hard is our community, like, no matter what decision we make, it, it feels like we're going to make a lot of people happy with something, and a lot of people, like, it's, it, this is so divided, like, that's actually my bigger worry, is that. I, I like...
This is too important for us.
It's too important, yeah, it's too, yeah, I do agree.
We're just, we're right now, and I, I don't, I don't buy that.
But at the same time, I mean, that's sort of where the community is, right?
I'm sorry, Karen.
At the same time, that's sort of where the community is, right? Flip a coin, 50/50 on vaccinations or not, 50/50 on masks are helpful, 50, you know, or not helpful. So at some point, to the superintendent's point, we have to make a decision, and we'll put it into place, and we'll make it work, and if we need to make an adjustment, we'll make an adjustment based on more information that's come available to us, whether that's data, whether that's guidance from the state.
But right now, the plan does not adequately define that.
So is it that we need to meet again with, with more definition of the plan?
I believe that we need a more sophisticated plan, but I'm, I'm reluctant to ask the administration, who have done their best, their best job to, to put something in front of us to do it. I, I think we have to do it since it's, since it's our decision, and that's, that's what I think, and I can be outvoted. Apparently, I was a swing vote.
Yes, clearly.
But if, but I, the reason I'm the swing vote is that enough people have concerns that there's not a clear majority, and I don't think, I don't want to be the clear, the maker of, of a clear majority where it doesn't exist. This is too important, this is too big a deal, there's too many things covered for it to just be, okay, today I feel this way. I'm not willing to be that. Sorry.
My recommendation, 'cause I just want to add one more meeting, would be to schedule another meeting with only one topic, this topic, because I think two things are gonna happen. Number one, I think when people find out the board is split, you may see a different audience in the room, because I think some people made assumptions because of what Hollis and Brookline did, that they didn't need to show up. I may be wrong, but I would think there'd be a different gathering, and we may need more chairs.
And air conditioning, air conditioning, too.
Air conditioning.
I'm just kidding, the auditorium.
We may, we may go to the auditorium. Great suggestion. Number two, at that point, I think the board needs to let us know what they would like us to do, because we have done our due diligence, we're going on 18 months of due diligence, we have sacrificed many, many other things to make this our top priority, and we need to know, in a span, very short span of time, what we're doing. We're trying to plan for opening days, we're trying to plan for professional development, we're also trying to reduce anxiety, and one reason anxiety goes up is when something is unknown. is unknown. So our students all tonight don't have a resolution to start to prepare. Our parents don't have a resolution to start to prepare. Our teachers don't have a resolution to start to prepare. Our administration does not have a resolution to start to prepare.
What will, what will be different in the preparation?
What would be different in the preparation? Number one, I would leave here tonight knowing what my direction is following. I don't know that, so that means none of my staff do. Number two, students sitting at home, for many of our parents, they would start to process with their student, whether it was optional or whether it was mandatory, and they would start to prepare their student, because we know there are people that are going to be unhappy either way.
But, but the, but the, I would agree with that, except that the absolute resolution we've given you gives you the authority to move and make change the decision at any point in time. So I think these kids need to go back to school, understanding that they may go into the school building on Monday masked, and they may go in the building the next day unmasked, or vice versa, and that's the kind of thing that they're, the resilience I think they're going to have to have, if we're going to have a flexible, if we're going to have some sort of a
Dynamic.
Dynamic.
It's the only middle ground, too, to find, it's got to be compromised with that. It's got to be both sides realizing that it's data-driven, and if things are bad, we need to put more in place, and if it's not, we don't. And it is, it's a compromise on both sides. I might not like it, you might not, I mean, you might, we might disagree, but we've got to find a way, and I think that's the only way, is to have that.
But the kids that are, the parents who are more concerned, because it is parents, I think, that are driving this, because the kids are not presenting with serious maladies. Actually, both of my kids that got the vaccine, got much thicker from the vaccine than the two kids who got COVID, ironically. So it is a big ask to put on a 12-year-old to run a temperature of 103 and throw up eight times on Monday due to the vaccine, but he did it, because he wants to go back to school. So I think there's a lot of families that are making those kinds of decisions, and I don't think we can, you know, I, I don't think we should criticize the parents who have decided not to vaccinate, no more than we should those that want to send their kids fully back in, in 95 masks. It's a personal decision, everybody's going to have to make that decision. I mean, this, to me, has a lot of parallels to the conversation we were having regarding DEI, and like, how we want our kids to be taught. There are a lot of differing opinions.
So what I'm hearing, though, we're at substantial right now, and, and, and three people have, on the board, have decided that, and that's fine, I'm not, not judging, that even at substantial in our county, that's not enough to mandate masks. So is high enough to mandate masks? And if that's the case, every, you guys are saying they aren't going to work. So is what you're saying, it doesn't matter what it is, we don't want masks?
I think you're misinterpreting our vote, because we were asked to put that masked or unmasked in a sentence with respect to a specific policy that has no metrics. So don't overstate what we did. But we are at substantial right now. I mean, that's where we are right now.
But we're not willing to sign up for substantial for the rest of the year with no idea what becomes not. Krista, I mean, my, my concern, though, is it's, again, it comes back to the county. I work in this county, and I can, like, I know the numbers in the population I'm working with, and they are not this, it's just different. So it's, every town varies so much, so that's my problem. I agree with you, I, I like the, that idea of it. My problem is that is too far away from us, it's not what's happening exactly here. Could it be happening here soon? Absolutely, I get that, but right now, to use the word substantial spread, when you look at the numbers in Hollis Brookline against our population, it's not really substantial spread here. It is in our county, but we don't know where our parents work. We don't know, I mean, I mean, parents work from, that's not, that's not going to help in our factor of what's happening here at home, what's happening in Hollis Brookline. So for me personally, I, it's, the metrics is important to me, but I'm uncomfortable just blanketly using county substantial spread, because I don't believe that's what's happening right here in Hollis Brookline. Like I said, it could be, but that's my problem, is it doesn't matter.
I'm just trying to understand where it's, if it, does it matter if we have a metric, or, you know, I mean?
Okay, so, just one comment on that. Last year, we left the decisions to our administrators who looked at the data regularly, and they made decisions that kept our kids in the building 95% of the time. I think we had a few weeks where they were remote. You know, I err on the side of going with their recommendations, because they've been the ones who are looking at this data, they're the ones who are deciding whether it's a county or a local, or, I understand that some of us want more specifics. We were told that we would get that in September, and I trust that we will get it. So I'd like to move forward so that we have some sort of a plan, whether we move forward to approve a reopening plan, or whether we move forward to have a, have a meeting. But it is 9:55, we need to figure this out. I'm, I don't know what the answer is, but I need to know what to do so that we can get out of here before midnight, because I'm getting up at 4:30. So what, anybody, what should we do? Should we take another vote?
If you're wanting to schedule another meeting, I will not be here next week, so that takes me out of the picture, which I don't like, because we spent three hours here listening to public, and I understand we're at a standstill, and there's nothing that we can do about it, but I won't be here, so it doesn't matter, because then you're going to be tied, if it stays the same. The matrix is not the issue for me. The issue is, I think that the mask should be optional. If people don't want to send their kids, then they don't send their kids. That's, that's life.
So, so you don't care what it is? If it's high, if there's 400 cases?
I, I trust Andy to make the decision and make the call, just like he did last year. I don't need this plan to say a certain matrix. I trust the administration to do that, but I feel like the community has a bigger issue with masks versus no mask, and I don't think that having another meeting is going to change my vote on that, because I would vote for the plan as it is. It's not that, it's the mask versus no mask.
Cindy, and with all due respect, I do, I totally appreciate what you're saying, but if, if you're saying that you trust Andy, right now Andy's saying, let's go unmasked, and so I think that's an important thing to remember.
Maybe the better choice is, I believe the science, I don't believe the data. So like Beth said, the data for the county could be totally different, and as they have stated, we don't know what the data is, because everybody's on vacation. We don't, we aren't going to know what the data is until we're in the buildings.
Are we doing another meeting, or are we taking another vote?
I prefer to take the vote, I prefer to make the decision tonight. I agree that it's very important, but I also agree that it's important for our students and our parents to know what they're anticipating, as well as our staff and our administration.
Do you want to put language in the motion that says that we will make the motion with the anticipation of a matrix, is that the right word? Matrix system, a metric for, for our September meeting? Would that be a legal motion? I'm not a lawyer. I mean, I, we have to move forward.
I'm not sure I understand what that motion is.
I, well, I didn't make it, I don't know how to make it. I'm asking the question, do we make a motion that says masks are required until such time as the, I, I don't know, or masks are optional unless the?
What if masks are mandatory to be revisited at the September meeting, once we have a better sense of what metric we can be using?
Or they're optional, until we can, I mean, I just, I don't think I can support it that way, but, I mean, I, I'm just speaking for myself, and I respect that, but I, I would, I would counter with the opposite.
I hear you, I would just err on the side of caution.
I mean, Tom, you're the deciding vote, I can't, we know that three of us have voted for a mask mandate.
Anyone can be the deciding vote.
I understand that, but I
So you're as, you're asking me to essentially independently make this decision, and I'm not willing to do so.
And that's kind of how I feel about putting it on Andy at this point, or putting it on the SAU office.
You've got, just, just from a timeline, you've got 11 days, if I'm correct, because you meet September 15th, you would have 11 days plus an orientation day, so one group in the building, so 12 days, just so you know the timelines, between tonight, when you meet again, and when our first child steps in the building.
And what happens in the absence of this?
What happens if we don't approve a plan? We just don't approve a plan?
Well, if there was
Andy has to open the school.
I'm thinking that that would be the one unifying result, is everyone in the community would be really upset, disappointed, and angry, right? If there's no plan, because then you know nothing.
That wouldn't, that wasn't my question, though.
No, well, to Andy's point, and to Beth's point about looking for local data, we don't have the data until the students are back. Your September board meeting allows 11 to 12 days, depending on the grade level of students in the building. That might
But what data are we going to have? Gina, what data are we going to have after they come back?
We don't have student data of student cases.
We won't have student data, because we can't test them, we can't ask them if they've been vaccinated, so what data are we going to gather once they come back into the building?
You'll get the known cases that would be reported to the nurse, that we send out our emails for and notify the community.
But half these kids are asymptomatic. I mean, so, or a good portion of these kids are asymptomatic, so unless you're actually pulling, using that pooling resource and testing them as they come in the door, we're not going to know what our numbers are, because we're very likely are going to end up with asymptomatic kiddos.
But they're part of the community as well.
Okay, I'm just going to change my vote, it's just easier that way. We need to open the schools, our kids need to go to school, that's all that has to happen here. I don't agree with it, but I'm going to change my vote, because I want the schools to open, because that's the most important thing. There's nothing else to do. We can sit here and we can debate for the next two hours, but one of us has to give, someone has to give, and I, I don't have any option. I don't see the option here. I mean, I can sit here and hold tight to this, and we cannot open schools, and then we don't have kids. I would, I agree with Tom, it would be great if we could all come to consensus, but we can't, so here's the thing, we live in this divided time, divided community, divided this, someone has to compromise, someone has to change, and I'm going to do it. So I'm going to make a motion to accept the reopening plan as presented incorporating the decision that the board, the masks be optional, authorizing the superintendent to make adjustments to the plan as deemed necessary based on local conditions, and require the board notification of any such changes. Anybody going to make that motion? I made it, Holly made it.
Second.
Second with Beth. All those in favor? All those opposed? There you go. Now we need to move to the retained, retained fund balance. We need to retain, I need a motion by a member to retain up to the sum of $180,760 of school fund balance from the FY '21 school year at the, as the end of the year available funds allow. I need a motion? Beth?
Second.
Kate? Is there any discussion on this? All those in favor? All those opposed? Seven, zero, zero. I need a motion by a member to take from the table policies JLF, ABBD, and JLDBA. Beth, seconded. Cindy? All those in favor? Seven, zero, zero. We have policy reporting child abuse and neglect. I need, I need a motion by a member to amend the title by adding the words "and neglect", and the first paragraph by deleting the last sentence, accept the third reading and adopt as amended.
Someone?
Beth, seconded by Cindy.
So we don't have the updated
It's there, it should be in there.
I have the policy, but it doesn't have the changes.
It does, if it didn't come through, I'm, I don't, I don't know why she took off neglect, actually, I don't know if that's correct, so let me just check that, please. I don't, it's just reporting child abuse, so I don't remember taking off and neglect, did we?
It's
Is that the title of the policy?
We just, that's why we just voted.
But they, we definitely struck the last sentence, the report may be completed in collaboration with the school administration, do you see that?
Yeah, that's the only change.
That's the only change we made. I don't remember taking off and neglect, so I don't know if it was, can some?
I thought you said the whole first
No, no, just the, just the last sentence. I don't, I think it was always reporting child abuse. Maybe it should be reporting child abuse and neglect, but I think, can, can someone look at?
Well, since the first sentence has abuse and neglect, it, the first sentence, the title should also
So can we add the words "and neglect" and prove, okay?
We can make the motion without amendment.
Okay, so, all those in favor? I, I just, yeah.
You weren't sure the motion
The motion has "and", add the words "and neglect" and delete the first, I, I'm sorry, I missed the vote. All those in favor? Seven, zero, okay. All right, I need a motion by a member to accept the first reading, waive subsequent readings, and re-adopt policy EBD indoor air quality as written. This policy is not changing, it was asked to, we, we were asked as a policy committee to review it, we reviewed it, and, and it's not changed, so we just need to re-adopt it.
Do you know what the basis for the request was?
I believe
COVID-related, I believe. There was a request by our union to, there was a request by our union to review the policy, to make sure that it met the legal requirements.
So there was not a specific complaint about the policy?
No.
So, this is a, I need a motion? Beth, second? All those in favor? Seven, zero. Okay, so for the next one, we need a motion to amend the title by replacing suicide prevention with the words behavior management and intervention, and accept the first reading as amended. So just to explain, this policy, JLDBA, has been mistitled in our policy packet. It should be behavior management and intervention policy that is required by law. We are working currently on a suicide prevention policy that we did not have, or that we've had, did we not?
No, we don't have the other one, but it's in progress, and it should come to the board next month. The, just one quick question, I know you haven't taken the, you, a motion yet, but can we make it as a motion to accept, like, not just first reading?
Oh, can we accept it and adopt?
Yes, please.
So, you would like to make the motion to amend the title by replacing suicide prevention with behavior management intervention, and accept the first reading and adopt?
Yes, ma'am.
As amended, sorry, as amended and adopt.
Yes.
Is there any questions or comment? Are you making that motion, Beth?
Yes, yes, please.
Is there a second? Is there any questions on that? All those in favor? Seven, zero, zero.
I move to table IMG.
A motion to table IMG by Mr. Solon, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Beth, all those in favor?
I think that's a wise choice.
Seven, zero, zero, good choice.
We don't argue about whether we have
Okay, some highlights, is there anyone? I think because we're not in session, maybe we'll skip highlights today?
Yeah.
And I need a report out by the process observer, before we go into non-public session.
Sure, just super quick, I mean, we were doing great on time, we allotted the hour, we ran just over it a little bit, everything was going smoothly, we definitely went way over on the reopening plan, but we chose, our chair decided to question and discuss at the same time, so it made, it made sense for that, but everything else, and, and we've never gone through policy so fast, this was awesome, so, great comments from the community, both email and, and verbally, but I think everything, everything looks good.
Great, thank you. Okay, at this point, I need a motion by a member that the board by roll call go into a non-public session pursuant to RSA 91A.
C is B.
Okay, thank you, so, so it's RSA 91 dash A colon 3, part 2, B and C, to discuss a matter which should discuss in public would likely affect diversely the reputation of a person other than a member of the body, and also be the hiring of any person as a public employee. I need a volk, I need a motion? Moved by Tom, seconded by Cindy. And a roll call vote, I'm sorry, go ahead. Beth?
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye.
Lisa, aye.
Cindy, aye.
Okay, that's seven, zero, we are going to non-public at...
May I see your under zero, thank you?
10, 10 p.m.
I know that you guys had a particularly hard job tonight, so thank you all for your service and the effort you put in. I, I do empathize with having to make the decision.
Thank you, John, okay, thank you.
So I'll leave you guys.
Thank you.
Do we wanna go to the...
The conference room?
Yeah.
Conference room is open, ladies and gentlemen.